Ms. Burke here.
Dr. Sapini.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Ms. Cosby, Ms. Page here. And Ms. Dorr is coming in, Ms. Owen. Yep. You have it on that.
I plead the allegiance and honor of the citizens. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united as one in the first law, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, the record is sent to the person who has been represented by Ms. Dorr. Good evening. We have our recognitions.
Good evening, everyone. I am excited to share a couple of recognitions tonight. First is for Ty Ligon, our student representative, who has ably served the last couple of weeks. And we are thrilled to have had your voice at the table and even more thrilled to continue to have your voice as part of the High School Student Advisory Council and to continue to see all the wonderful things you will achieve this year and beyond as you make your way out in the world with all of your incredible success and achievements. So if you could join me and give me a big round of applause. If you'd like to take a picture. Keylor. Ms. Dorr and then Ms. Burke. All right, our second recognition of the evening is for the region two A champions in football, Thomas Jefferson. Can we give them a big round of applause? I had the pleasure of watching the gentlemen play throughout the playoff season, made the trek outs to wherever it was you had that final day. I had never been out there, but I want to tell you, though the outcome wasn't what I knew you had hoped for, everybody here knows how hard you played and we are incredibly proud of you and you have brought an incredible honor to TJ, to RPS and the entire city of Richmond. So we just couldn't be more thrilled and real proud of you. I'm going to read off the names of those people who are here. Let's do it all at once. And then if you can come on up, we'll do a big picture. So starting with Shamar Graham, Randy Anderson, Jayden Vaughn, Jalen Jones. If you could stand up. D'Shawn Smith, Lauren Johnson, Jacoby Harrison, Akeem Scott, Jayden Tyler, Trevon Alfred, Andre Jones, Suleman Sucko, Josh Taylor, Charlie Boss, Kareem Richardson, Salah Hawash, Christian Worridge, Yvonne Gresham, Jermaine Booker, Jaron Benjamin, Earl Benjamin, Jamari Clark, Caleb McClatchy, Josiah Harrow, Dylan Marcolis, and Paul Adams. And if we could have Coach come up as well and Amy, parents, family members, principals here, anybody else in TJ. Could you, trainer, cousin? Anybody could come on up. Let's give them a big round of applause. And we can do two rows. One back here, one down here. And Ms. Burke and Ms. Dorr. We have one more recognition. The resolution honor National Council. We break it down. And time for the bell. So here goes. Whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children. And whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. And whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Now therefore being resolved that the school board of the city of Richmond does hereby recognize February 3rd, September 2020 as National School Counseling Week. And I believe we have a couple of counselors in attendance. If you could come on up and be recognized, we would love to have them.
This is our counselor on just her back.
All right. Can you introduce yourself?
Yes, hello, everyone. My name is Anne Harris. I'm a school counselor at Bellevue Elementary School. I've been serving here for seventeen years, nineteen years in all in Richmond Public Schools. And I love being a school counselor.
And she's awesome. She is absolutely awesome.
And we could do a picture? And I have heard, among many other things, you have organized a Career Day for the young people at Bellevue. Is that correct?
We're very successful. We have an annual Career Day in November.
And how many different visitors did you have for that?
We had approximately twenty-five visitors.
Fantastic.
And we had some horses.
Oh. Fantastic. And the lead person for Community of Caring. I hear.
Yes. And I put in a little word for Community of Caring, so that was part of our initiative as well. We recently had our Community of Caring ambassadors to create pampering bags for local care toss event and they went and they mailed for the women and the women in the toss.
Oh, wow. Fantastic.
And we shared those pictures with you guys. So I'm seeing those pictures of those paper bags and the manicure.
Well, thank you so much for being here this evening to represent all of your fellow counselors. Thank you so much for what you do every day. We know it is truly critical work for the young people in Richmond Public Schools. We're incredibly grateful to you and we're hoping to have more of you next year, budget permitting. So again, on behalf of RPS, thank you so much for all that you do.
Okay. I inadvertently skipped adopting the agenda. Could I have a motion for that?
So move.
Is there a second? Oh, you have a...
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I was wondering if we could remove the item specific to the middle school program of studies guide. I think we received the document today and so we have an agenda item for the first read. And given the late, you know, I think it would be good to review it once the board has collectively been able to review it and read it.
Okay. Is there a second to the amendment? Okay. Can I see a show of hands for those who would like to postpone that one until our next meeting? Okay, all right, then we will do that. So that was item...
Eight point oh two.
Eight point oh two. And so then Ms. Page had moved the agenda. So now as amended...
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right, is there a second? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then moving on to our public information period. If you would like to address the board this evening, please stand and make a line here at the podium. And when you come to your turn, please state your name as well as signing in at the podium. And you will have three minutes. If you are speaking as an individual, if you are speaking on behalf of a group, you will have five.
And while he's signing in, let the record reflect you've been joined by Ms. Cosby.
Good evening. Madam Chair, Superintendent Representatives of the School Board, those in attendance. My name is Curtis Lee and I'm the External Outreach Manager for the Market at Twenty-Fifth. The Market at Twenty-Fifth is an independent grocery store located in Churchill. The Market was created to combat the negative impacts of the food desert, which has plagued residents and families in the East End for decades. We are a market with a mission. At the Market at Twenty-Fifth, we believe in the greatness of people, the goodness of food, and the importance of community. This is our mission. Through the developing of viable partnerships, we are able to put our mission into action. I know you may be wondering where am I getting at? An example of this is the extraordinary partnership that we have with Richmond Public Schools. With the Richmond Public Schools Office of Engagement led by Brady Harden, Will Keenan, we are able to engage families, students, and teachers throughout the East End community. An example of this is giving us the opportunity to promote our Loyalty Rewards Card within the schools. This program here, any shopper can link their Loyalty Rewards Card to any school of their choice and in turn raise funds for that school. This is made possible through our partnerships with the Engagement Department of Richmond Public Schools. We're also able to disseminate or rather pass out school supplies to teachers in need after that winter break occurred. We're able to do this in-school pop-ups and also through the teacher store. Not only has this partnership given us the opportunity to use the RPS newsletter and social media platforms to disseminate our resources and information to families in need, but it also gives us the opportunity to engage communities. An example of that would be our sponsor, it would be one of the sponsors for the Martin Luther King I Have a Dream Festival in May. During that festival, we'll be feeding families and engaging families on some of the resources that we have, such as our fifty percent of fresh fruits and vegetables for any resident who receives EBT or SNAP benefits. Also, the promotion of a in-store pharmacy as well as our pro-social activities in store for seniors. Just wanted to take your time briefly to say that the Market at Twenty-Fifth, we are a market with a mission and we greatly appreciate the partnership with Richmond Public Schools. These partnerships were able to put food on the tables and inform families and educators about the resources at the Market. So hats off to everyone here. Hats off to the Department of Community Engagement, RPS, and I look forward to continuing to grow this partnership. Thank you for your time and our great need.
Thank you.
My name is Malcolm. My name is Malcolm Solomon, representing the Rural Center of Learning, which is a learning center in Richmond.
In honor of Black History Month, I'd like to take this board on a historical journey. The injustice continues. As of today, February eighteenth, I have yet to receive any form of communication from either RPS administration or selected representation regarding the status of the unjust ban prohibiting my ability to work with students on school grounds. While I find this behavior extremely unprofessional, I cannot say it is unexpected. The mistreatment of non-whites in Virginia's education system and more specifically Richmond is among the most diabolical points in the state's long and immoral history with race. This behavior toward non-whites in Virginia has existed since enslaving of non-white people in this country. And the current RPS administration's behavior demonstrates a determination to ensure those racist practices remain in existence. During the nineteen fifties, a policy known as mass resistance was adopted by Virginia State Government to prevent non-whites from entering schools with white students. Several counties deliberately closed their schools. State and local officials refused to use political power to bring change while non-whites remained left out as they continued to fight injustice. Today, I stand as one of those non-whites during the fifties, left out of the education process through a systemic mass resistance policy. The modern mass resistance effort is not the closing of schools to non-white students, but the lockout of non-white educators and reaching those non-white students. Instead of preventing non-white students from participating in the schools, we have arrived at a point where we now prevent qualified educators from entering the classroom. As if someone decided if we cannot keep them from coming, we can decide who will be there when they arrive, thus directly impacting the quality of the education of our students, the quality of the education our students receive. While the target of the mass resistance has changed, it appears the practice has remained the same. Non-white teachers can be locked out and resisted through unilateral bans. And as in the fifties, local officials refused to recognize injustice and act to protect non-white teachers and students. History would like us to believe that with the drop of a gavel, the goals of racist educational policies and practices suddenly evaporated from the classrooms, administrative offices, and the very minds that perpetuated these segregationist practices. I'm sure that many parents, grandparents, and even great-grandparents of current Richmond students will disagree. I rise today in agreement with those many families with one exception. I believe the ghostly drum of segregation that beat through the heart of old Richmond, shouting resist and shutdown to integration, never left and is still present. It shockwaves have evident in the maltreatment of non-white educators by RPS. While it is possible that white teachers may have similar experiences, I focus today on the non-white experience because I'm certain had my skin color been white, a ban would not have been considered. Or the request to have the ban removed would not have been ignored. It is a historical fact that Richmond has a long and proven, deep-seated affinity toward a segregationist perspective and a preference with respect to access and outcomes within the school system. Such treatment is demonstrative of a system that once resisted and shut out students who looked like and spoke differently, persisting through the present-day resistance and shut out of teachers who wished to teach those students, overwhelmed by an unjust and harmful system. I say this once again. My request is simple. Lift the ban.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Members of the School Board. After May is Colonel Day, I'm from Franklin Military Academy. I just wanted to share with you the importance of your GRTC program, what it's done to affect seventy-two different schools through four states, but also brought some cadets to share with you the importance of the program to them, how they feel about the program. And I was kind of close with the notes.
Please don't forget to sign your name.
Good evening. My name is Cadet First... Sorry. My name is Cadet. Sorry, First Class David Grant. And I'm here to show you how GRTC has changed. In all possible ways, GRTC has changed the trajectory of my life. I started out as a shy sixer at Franklin Military Academy in the fall of twenty fifteen. Here I stand, a grating swinger at Franklin Military Academy in skill. The GRTC program at Franklin has taught me perseverance, respect, the importance of integrity, and responsibility. All of the values it has taught me, most important to me are teamwork and it's given me something to be proud of. Every morning, I wake up and put my uniform with a proud smile on my face. I take pride in how I look. I take pride in my uniform and I take pride in making sure my regulations are respected. Through all of GRTC, I have found my voice and my passion for advocacy. It has given me opportunities that will change my life forever. Franklin Day and other staff at Franklin Military Academy have made me feel like home. And I would like to say thank you for keeping GRTC in Richmond Public Schools.
Hello. My name is Jaylon Oliver. I am a part of the first class of Franklin Military Academy. And GRTC has shaped my life as it is today. I started off at Franklin as a sixth grader, but I didn't push it to it. And when I first came to Franklin, I thought I would be a video games artist. But as I've progressed and became a junior, I've realized that that's not a good path for me. And I feel like GRTC has helped me shape that and now I'm going to become an Air Force officer and an engineering. Now I feel like without Franklin Military's GRTC program, I'd never have found my passion. So thank you for the support.
Thank you. Okay, let's sign in. Thank you.
Seven plus, here's all I can share. I know Colonel Rolback spoke and addressed the board. So we have two programs we developed. One is a STEM program. It's like, and it's for, again, how we touch four different states, seventy different schools. That's one program. The other one is at AP Hill. We have five hundred cadets going to both. What I'd like to do is have some of the school board members come out and see what your cadets are doing. See in the news some adventure training and also see some of the STEM exercises. We have, I think this year we have a UH-60 coming in to kind of share with cadets some flight information, but also tech. Tech has a full program of just STEM exercises plus adventure training again. Come on out and see. They do forty-foot rope rock? Please, I know you guys have some adventure parts, so come out here and get on a forty-foot tower and rappel down. I know you guys can do that. So my point is, come on out. We have folks from other school districts, school board members, and superintendents coming out to see the kids. Please, I invite you out. It's the twenty-fifth to the thirtieth of June. And I think the other one is Colonel Rolback. What's the other?
Twenty-fifth to twenty...
Twenty-twenty-fifth at Tech. Please come on out. Thank you for your time this afternoon. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Budget season is here again. Last year, I spoke about the need for teachers in middle schools and understanding of school-level budgets and providing transparency and knowledge about the budget process. This year, I am once again standing here to advocate for an understanding of schools' individual needs and school-level budgets. I believe foundational items in a school must be addressed before larger new efforts are performed. It's not that I do not think new ideas are valid or hold merit, but our foundation must be stronger before many of these efforts are attempted. Because let's be real, we only have a certain amount of money and it only stretches so far. Until we address thoughtful and openly individual school needs in regards to growth and change and then address that within the whole system, there is little reason to add shiny objects. For example, in high school needs. TJ will receive approximately one hundred and twenty-two new students next year due to reserving, of which approximately thirty percent of those have special needs. The population will be entirely, nearly entirely economically disadvantaged. This will be in addition to our normal IB and open enrollment for new ninth graders. At TJ, we already have crowded classrooms with thirty-five plus kids in any classes. We lost a security officer last year and they were never replaced. We never received any attendance help this year. And on that note, last week, my daughter's sick and guidance was a challenge with over sixty absences and hopefully fill out the paperwork. We lost our testing coordinator and that job this year failed to overburden staff. We did not receive tutors until after SOL retakes in January. What was the point to that? And at TJ, we lack many of the basic items throughout the building. We are still literally installing white boards, over chalk boards. For next year, some of our needs are: additional ten full-time teachers, including sped, another guidance counselor, maybe an AP, tutors in a timely manner at the start of the school year, an attendance officer, a testing coordinator, money for supplies because for whatever reason, we still have donors choose for additional novels in the classroom, money for professional development for the whole school to experience IB, and maybe an honest discussion about funding IB if that is actually possible. At this moment, the IB system is simply not functional because children pay that price. Innovations as distractions do not serve us well. We cannot continue to hit the can down the road on basic needs within the specific buildings. My fourth and final child completes middle school this year and he is a prime example of making next year. This completely saddens me as their opportunity quotient versus their older sibling's opportunity quotient at the end of middle school is and was significant.
Thank you.
Good evening, School Board Superintendent chairmen. I'm Andrea Barrett. I'm a new behavioral specialist working in the real school of the part of the Amory Street School Hospital in Rockville. Our students participated in informal remaining role and they were presented with renames for a possible change. The School of Diversity and Learning, the Veracated Learning Center, and the Resilient Center. Many of our students chose the Resilient Center as they understood resilience to represent themselves defined by strength and the ability to bounce back from a tough situation. The students who teach battle challenges of trauma and they incorporate restorative circles, healing-centered engagement approaches, and mindfulness into our curriculum to restore their esteem and encourage resilience so that the student is prepared to return back into their home school with the field that they did not have before. I stand with our students in the popular choice of the Resilient Center as I do believe that resilience is everything we want for all of our students to strive by. Through my interactions working previously in school culture, climate, and community services, priority three, trauma-informed care and restorative practices have become a focal point for the district and I'm hopeful that the Resilient Center can be included in our plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Phyllis Seymour and I'm representing the Richmond Medical Lab. And I am here to strongly advocate for changes to be made. ESL students, not... ESL students not only need teachers, they need to learn. They are, they're, I know that it's not a secret that there are students without a teacher because there's not enough to go around. So they're kind of like in a holding room with like somebody who's a babysitter. And I can't understand why they wouldn't have access to an art class, to that, to mindful Ram Bhagat's, Dr. Bhagat's mindfulness program, something other than just sitting there. The, I'm sorry, I can't listen anymore. I can't come to the meetings and listen to this flowy assessment of where we stand as a community. And I'm sorry, Ms. Burke, if this sounds like it's divisive, but it is. It's not intended to. The system, the environment, has created something very divisive. The, when you look at the budget, just bringing ESL teachers is not, so you all already know, it's not going to solve it. There are resources that we have in-house that are not tapped, that are not brought into the living. And I am demanding that changes are made to how our kids are educated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Katina Harris, I'm the president of Richmond Education Association, but I'm here on behalf of Lola McDowell, who is our RA, retired representative. Lola is a past RPS president. Even though she's still retired, she's still holding the Read Across America program. And I'm here today to invite you guys to come read to some of our preschool students. I have invitations that I will give to you. The NEA Read Across America is to motivate the students to read and bring joy to reading to students of all ages and make all children feel valued and welcome. This year she's working with the Office of Human and Civil Rights to identify schools and communities and organizations to appreciate the role of reading and how it impacts our community. She understands that you're busy people, that if you could set aside some time and attend some of the schools that are listed on the flyer. You have on March second, Overdy Shepherd, March third, Dr. MLK Junior preschool, March fourth, Summer Hill preschool, and March fifth, Iswoodville. To come read to some of the students. And I will give invitations to. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this time? I will tell those of you sitting in the back that there are now empty chairs up here if you would like to move forward, since most of our football players have left us. In that case, we will move on to four point oh one, receive an implementation update on Priority Two, skilled and supportive staff.
Good evening, School Board. I'm pleased to present some brief updates this evening on Priority Two. The project plans are on Word docs and I'll walk through each one with updates on type of work that we've done on them over the last couple of months. So the first one, action two point one, related to top talent. There are two key items that have occurred. The first is we continue our customer service trainings that are offered to all central office staff as well as all front office staff. We hosted our most recent session on January seventeenth, the PD Day, had about a hundred attendees and ninety-eight percent of them said that the training was a good use of our time, which is the impact measure. You'll also see that in Priority Four. And then the second piece that we've done is related to customer service in schools. The Talent Office has begun bringing teens out to schools to meet with teachers and other staff to discuss all things talent, whether that's questions about benefits, contracts, things like that. So far, we've gone to MLK, Green, and Henderson, and this week and next we'll be at Albert Hill, George Mason, and Swansboro. That's just for the month of February, and then we'll continue to visit schools throughout the winter in order to provide that in-person customer service experience for our staff. Project Three and Four have to do with our work around marketing improvement, marketing and recruitment. We are currently working with a marketing company for recruitment collateral for the visits that we're doing throughout the spring. Much of the funding associated in Project Three is also for travel. And then we have hired the recruiter for Project Four and is supporting cluster-based recruitment efforts. Project Five, as we had discussed three or four months ago, was repurposed to support teacher licensure efforts. This part-time licensure specialist was hired and of course, we've been discussing the upgrade of this position to a full-time licensure specialist in the proposed fiscal year twenty-one budget. As the superintendent shared last time, licensure just simply is one of our most important items on which we focus with the video. I'll move then to Project, sorry my. Project Seven, as you also noticed in the fiscal year twenty-one proposed budget, we are no longer moving forward with this work. This was the idea of having applicants submit videos of their teaching as part of our selection process. While this is something that ultimately we do think we would want to explore, given that we've already proposed not doing this in fiscal year twenty-one, obviously we're not going to launch it in fiscal year twenty and can be repurposing the twenty thousand dollars that remain in this project for school-based needs. And in Project Eight, adding a staff member to enhance the rig of the selection process is posted, and they're doing final interviews this week and next. All right, if we move to Project Two, which specifically is focusing on increasing and retaining the number of male teachers of color in RPS. Our focus, as we noted this winter and spring, is recruitment at HBCUs and HSIs. We're specifically focused this season on nine HBCUs, specifically targeting those with a higher number of male education graduates. They may be local universities like BYU or Virginia State or Hampton, as well as a national effort to include schools like Alabama A&amp;M. From the HSI perspective, a couple of strategies are in play now. The team did visit Puerto Rico to begin recruitment there to see, given their shortage in the teaching positions, and we have a small cohort coming to Richmond next month to explore opportunity. We're looking to establish relationships with Miami-Dade College and Florida International, and we're currently partnering with the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and truce for teachers and have been participating in joint job fairs with them. We're also about to launch the invitation for the working group of male teachers of color to design the cohort experience, what that could look next year, ongoing professional development, experiences, mentorship, social events, et cetera. So that should kick off in the next couple of weeks, and we look forward to them helping shape that work. Two point three, this is around compensation. Both of these are completed. Project One is to implement the salary step of one point one seven percent for our teachers, and Project Two was the salary decompression for principals and nurses. Everyone is being paid a different rate. Two point four, as we had discussed a couple of months ago, the funds in two point four were repurposed into Priority One, which Tracy talked with you guys about at the last meeting, and the rest were in the equity fund. So again, this work is happening, but in connection with the curricular work in Priority One versus D, et cetera. Two point five, around equity inclusion. We are currently piloting with the Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities some foundational equity trainings at Lushall, Oakheart Thompson, Huguenot, and WIF, maximizing our current partnership. And an RFP is being finalized now in order to secure our long-term partner for this work to be able to develop a division-wide plan moving forward. Action two point six, the Richmond Teacher Residency, which is Project One. As you know, these mentors coach teachers over the course of two years, observation, support, professional development, and train in-house mentors. We currently have thirty-two residents, eleven elementary, seventeen secondary, and six in special education. And recruitment and selection is underway right now for the next cohort. Also excitingly, an expansion in this work is a new instructional assistant pathway to support those staff to become teachers. So we're excited to continue to expand opportunity for current staff. In terms of tuition reimbursement, we've spent about half of these dollars to date, which makes sense as we're about right after the semester one. We expect more requests to come in now as teachers may be engaged in professional development or coursework for which they can request tuition reimbursement. The RPS Rising Gala, which will be held on May seventh. Today, the RFP closed for our video work and the RFP will close next week for our caterer and event planning support. Nominations for our Staff Member of the Year and Equity Award, Rodney Robinson Equity Award and Principal of the Year will be out shortly, and we're excited to report that. And then finally, two point eight, RBA incentives. This year, the project has been entered in tuition reimbursements, which is action two point six. I welcome any questions on any of these actions.
Mr. Young, then Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michelle, thanks. Can you elaborate on the video or there was initially an interest in soliciting of persons who are applying to be considered for positions?
You mean two point one, Project Seven, to expand the functionality for video to be part of our selection process?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Could you elaborate a little bit more on the decision-making relevant to dispatching that idea?
It's certainly not due to not bringing it philosophically, it was more a matter of capacity and where we were this year. Ultimately, we do want to be prioritizing hiring veteran teachers with proven records of success working with students like those in RPS, and this would give opportunity for them to submit, upload a video of their own teaching experience or teaching practice. We would need to build a cadre of reviewers who would be able to evaluate those videos against a ruler and then add that to a selection list. That was just a bit more, I think, that we could do this.
Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm delighted to hear the opportunity for teacher assistants, paraprofessionals, to be able to go back to school and complete their degrees. It's so important that we acknowledge the experience we have right here with us every day. And in fact, I was informed this past Sunday at my church of someone that's applying. Would you share the process and is there a cost and what university? How's that going to work?
I don't have those details, but I'll connect with Dr. Darlene Curry and I can share those back.
Do they have to pay?
I don't believe that the residency is a cost to participants, but I don't really see.
My other question is, if I may, Teacher of the Year. Did we ever have, we didn't have our, you did?
That's being combined into this gala, so those folks will be honored at the event under center.
So the person that we will or we will not select, that you all won't select in a Teacher of the Year for twenty, nineteen, twenty school year, because that's gone?
Right. Basically, that person got to be the Teacher of the Year this year. They will be formally in that after school. They'll be formally announced as the RPS Teacher of the Year in May, and then it will go on in May-to-May cycle.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Desco. So, implementation update on Priority Three, Safe and Loving School Cultures.
Good evening, Madam Chair Owen, School Board members, and Superintendent Chair. I'm delighted to bring you updates on the eight actions of Priority Three, our dreams for RPS, Safe and Loving School Cultures. The main focus of our trauma-responsive work, which is action three point one, is verbal de-escalation. Right now, our behavior specialists, in partnership with our lead behavior specialist, Carrie O'Connell, and Mark Wilbinder from SCAM, which is Stop Child abuse now, have started providing verbal de-escalation and professional development to staff at eleven schools. This PD will continue into the spring as each staff member will go through three sessions. At the same time, our trauma-responsive leads continue to engage in verbal de-escalation training. Our goal is for our trauma-responsive leads to support teachers and staff in the implementation of verbal, of verbal de-escalation practices once all the PD has been completed. The core of our restorative justice work, action three point two, is the implementation of community circles to cultivate and maintain a safe and loving school and class culture by building meaningful relationships between staff and students and students and their peers. Currently, we have teachers across our division who implement community circles, which is very exciting. Our goal is to systematize this process across eleven schools so that every student in these eleven schools participates in a weekly community circle. Currently, Ram Bhagat, our manager of school climate and culture planning, is providing professional development to our twenty-two restorative practice leads. He is also engaging the school culture and climate teams and the principals of these eleven schools. Additionally, Dr. Bhagat and I will receive feedback from our principals tomorrow as we finalize our plan of rollout community circles to teachers this spring. Action three point three, Own Child Supports. That work was completed last summer when we added three social workers and two nurses. Hopefully, we'll be able to add more social workers, social workers and nurses as a result of this year's budget cycle. Action three point four, Relationships. We decided to integrate the team-building work into our two STEM academies. Instead of us focusing on one middle school and one high school, we will have the team-building retreats at Henderson and MLK. We're now shifting ownership of this work to our Passion for Learning Design Team to ensure an integrated experience as part of the STEM orientation. With regards to action three point five, Student Leaders. Next week, I will send out criteria to principals regarding the selection process for the Maggie Walker Service of the, Service Award and the Scholastic Standout. This celebration will occur in mid-May and invitations will be sent out in March. Action three point six, Joy. School principals recently received their allocations, their financial allocations, and have started using this funding to celebrate students as well as their staff. Action three point seven, Classroom Management. We are still in the process of procurement and we anticipate this training to happen on a spring timeline and on a spring timeline and continue working to next year. And then finally, action three point eight, our school justice collaborative. As mentioned before, we have partnered with the Juvenile Justice Collaborative. So far, members of our school culture and climate team and myself have attended meetings. Together, we've completed systems mapping to identify key entry and decision-making tools for youth answering the justice system. We participated on a subcommittee to examine recent ethnic disparity issues impacting juvenile justice. And finally, we participated on the Juvenile Justice Prevention Roundtable to find alternatives other than detention to respond to youth who engage in behaviors such as pruney, curfew, and running away from home. I will pause there for a question.
Ms. Dor, then Ms. Cosby, then Mr. Young, then Ms. Burke.
Thank you for this. Just a quick question on classroom management. I appreciate that you're identifying priority schools for, in which to provide teachers with classroom management. It's a common thing that I hear from new teachers is the desire for more PD around classroom management. So how are we providing supports to teachers that might not be at the priority identified schools but might be new? Said another way, why aren't we providing classroom management training to teachers that kind of opt in or need it the most versus kind of potentially creating a system where they can access that training?
I would say at this point, if teachers are struggling with classroom management, it is incumbent upon their principal and their assistant principal through a cycle of ongoing informal evaluation to be able to coach and support that teacher around classroom management. I would also say that there is opportunity within school buildings to have newer teachers, have veteran teachers who can support that in implementing effective classroom management
Okay. Ms. Cosby?
Thank you. Actually, I wasn't going to ask this question, but I just want to make a statement piggybacking off of what my colleague, Ms. Dor, mentioned. You know, I will just bring up again mentors. You talked about veteran teachers mentoring newer teachers. However, when we talk about someone's capacity, do our veteran teachers necessarily have the capacity to handle their caseload in addition to making sure that they help newer teachers? So I think as we delve into, I don't know if we talked about another title grant, was it Title Four? I can't remember. But that's very important as we talk about creating mentors to go into the classroom and as we talk about this classroom management. So what does that look like? So yes, PD, I mean, you know, we can PD people to death, but if we don't have folk going into the classroom and really being able to address situational issues that are happening, sometimes that, you know, you can talk all you want theoretically. It matters when you get into that classroom and helping a new teacher apply the theory to what's actually happening. So anyway.
So let me first start by saying, I agree that being able to provide additional support using perhaps an outside vendor is beneficial. However, as a former principal and a school that was very similar to many of our schools in RPS, I will say that if a principal and assistant principal constantly are doing informal walkthroughs or they are living in classrooms, those individuals should be able to diagnose things that teachers could do better to build better relationships with their students. At the same time, the way I envision it should work is as a mentor teacher, and I do understand there is power in the mentor teacher going in and observing a new teacher. However, that time is precious because clearly the mentor teacher has a caseload or his or her own. That's where the work is done in the collaborative planning. I mean, the collaborative planning is not just about planning for math and English instruction. It is also an opportunity to use a mentor or a veteran teacher as a thought partner to be able to surface issues that they are having with individuals or a class of individuals and to get feedback and thought partnership, again, with the principal and the assistant principal constantly being in support of that teacher.
Thank you. I would just reiterate that as we move forward, that we do look at additional mentors. We do have some new teachers. They are brand-new teachers. And I will be very frank with you, we have some new teachers who are scared of our children. And that is a problem. So it's a problem on the HR end, but also we have to make sure that we are dealing with implicit biases and all that other stuff. But when we talk about classroom management, it's just not having someone go to PD and we're checking the box. If we want to be extremely intentional, and that's all I'm saying, we need to look at that. I remember being a new teacher in Harlem, and it benefited me to have a retiree come into, not just do professional development, but come into the classroom and really, you know, observe me in the classroom, but also teach a couple of things so I can see it too in my classroom, dealing with the personalities in my classroom. So I just strongly reiterate that to my colleagues because we do need support. I'm sorry, Ms. Gibson, I'm not quite, I love, but anyway, I got off on a tangent. My question was before listening to my colleague. So how do we choose these eleven schools where we have, how do we choose the eleven schools?
To be frank, we chose the eleven schools based on our belief that the principal could lead this work. Because if we're truly going to go to a system where we implement restorative practices and we lead a trauma-informed, we lead through a trauma-informed lens, that work starts with the principal. So we looked at principals who we knew would be dedicated, who are dedicated to RPS, who we believe had the right mindset to lead this work, and who could inspire their staff to embrace what is right for children, which is to be a kinder, gentler teacher who does everything in his or her power to build offensive relationships with students.
Okay. And for the, you talked about being on the, participating in the roundtable discussions about, this is the JJC.
Yes.
And so youth entry, and then are we having discussions about youth who are exiting our juvenile detention systems, what that looks like? How do we make sure that they have the support to do well as they go back into the classroom?
Right. In some ways, I would say with our work with the JJC, because they have been doing this work for quite some time now, we are sort of allowing them to take the lead and we follow. But that is definitely an area of opportunity that we can surface as a look for.
I will also say not just for our students who are re-entering our schools from a juvenile detention institution, but also those students who are in our alternative program too, to make sure that there's supports there as they go back into our comprehensive high schools that, or our schools, period, and I'm just not going to say comprehensive high schools, just our schools, that we do have supports for them. So I think that's critical. All right. I'll be back. Thank you so much.
Mr. Young, then Ms. Burke, then Mr. Barlow, then Ms. Page, then Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, thank you, Harry. I appreciate all your tremendous work, and I'm always grateful for the opportunity for us to share best practices and benchmark as it relates to our teachers. And no, no one would fail to acknowledge the awesome work that our teachers do, but I do want us to always, always be mindful of the fact that our teachers are doing extraordinary work in classroom management. And sometimes, frequently, I'd point out, it's not the teacher at fault. So that's the first point. My inquiry regards, you spoke to some of the new, some of the new practices that we have adopted. But what kind of, what kind of evidence do we have to date that any of those things that you spoke to are actually moving the needle? I don't expect us per se to be collecting data around that, but even anecdotally, what kind of evidence do we have that we are reducing, for lack of a better description, recidivism, that we are improving the culture in our, in our schools? Can you speak to that now?
Sure. First of all, I do want to clarify one thing. Trauma-responsive work and restorative practices, these are actually not new practices. These are practices that our best teachers have been doing for years. I'll give you an example of a trauma-informed best practice. Who, as a student, decide you're going to flip, that you, for whatever reason, have been a very bad day, and you start to get angry and upset. A trauma-responsive practice is for me to actually come over to you, perhaps put my hand on your shoulder and whisper in your ear, let's go outside and talk about it. Or what's bothering you? So first of all, I don't want us to start, my fear is that folks start believing that this is something new, and then it becomes an old boy, here's just another initiative that comes from City Hall. If you think about the best teachers you've had over the course of your years, teachers you supervise in some aspects, I'm sure that many of them led with trauma-responsive lens and used restorative practices. In terms of the data that we will ultimately collect, we will be looking at a reduction in suspensions and an increase in student satisfaction. Now, right now, we can't correlate any of that data to what we're doing with actions three point one and three point two. But I can tell you, or I would actually invite all of you to perhaps attend a session with our trauma-responsive leads, our restorative practice leads, or teachers who are implementing community circles, whether it be John Marshall, Albert Hill, Luchal, MLK. And I think right now, those teachers and the students who they are possibly impacting will be the best advocates for this work.
Okay. Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm reflecting upon my days, and I'm thinking about Harry Wong, which was one of the best resources to utilize in terms of what you're speaking. Professional development, the hands-on piece, but what really, really, really worked, and I'm glad that you stated it, I wanted to know also, as Mrs. Felicia Cosby asked, what, I wanted to know who are the eleven schools? Being that, number one, I'm hoping that they will serve as the models because it does have to be consistent throughout the entire school, what is expected. I can remember as a child, having teachers that didn't have professional development. They just knew how to care and teach. All right. Thank you. Same thing now. All professional development is either there or not there, but Ms. Cosby made a very good point. Some of our teachers may be afraid of, or not necessarily being afraid, but not as comfortable. So we do need to address that as well, which goes beyond really the school day. So what my question is, with the eleven schools that have been selected, because in the end, everybody should be held accountable for having the type of climate that's listed here, which is that of high expectations and expectations to be successful. So what's going to be the follow-up for the rest of the other thirty-three schools? Right now, we're only talking about eleven, so next year, will there be eleven more added or eleven more? Will the eleven that's been trained, will they share? And that's what I really wanted to know too, because I wanted to know what's happening in my district.
Absolutely.
But will they be train-to-trainer models or what's going to happen?
All right. So I think you're, I'm going to answer your question briefly first. First, I'll give you the schools that participate in both the trauma-responsive training as well as the restorative practices. So for trauma-responsive, it's mostly elementary schools. We have Lockwell, Broad Rock, Carver, Francis, George Mason, Gensmore Park, Oak Grove, Oberle Shepherd, Crete, and Woodville. And our middle school is Elkhart Thompson. And for our restorative practices work, it's mostly middle and high schools, but our elementarys are Chippewa Rosso, Westover Hills. Our middle schools are Albert Hill, Luchal, Martin Luther King. And then our high schools are Armstrong, George Webb, Huguenot, John Marshall, Richmond Community, and Thomas Jefferson. In terms of what does it look like for the rest of the division, we, that is the reason that we were very intentional in setting up school culture and climate teams at every single school. So every single RPS school has a school climate and culture team, and right now, we are relying heavily on that school climate and culture team through training, interactions with Dr. Bogart, interactions with SCAM, to figure out, like, what's the natural first step we can make in this work at your school? That's not going to be a huge lift or seen as a burden. In terms of where we go next, that is something that Superintendent Chairless and I need to discuss to figure out, do we add another eleven schools? Or perhaps next year, the trauma-responsive schools and not the restorative practice schools and vice versa. So now, at the end of next year, we have half the division having both trauma-responsive practices and restorative practices, training and trauma-responsive training.
One last thought. So I'm thinking in terms of the daily reports that we receive regarding situations that take place in schools. Most of these schools aren't listed, just a couple of them. So that's listed when there's been a behavior, students that need to be redirected, the daily reports we get from security. So a lot of these schools are not listed on that. So I'm thinking in terms of someone mentioned, I think Mr. Young mentioned data. Is there any data to support that? So there probably, and I know you stated eventually, it should be fewer students being suspended. Attendance should be better. So there probably already is some data regarding that because a lot of these schools' names that I may have seen last year, I don't see this year.
Right. I mean, I would say, again, most of it would be anecdotal evidence.
Okay.
But the principals, yes, I mean, we have some schools where you would say, you know, that's a tough school to work at, or the children there experience a greater level of toxic stress in their lives. And you're right, many of these schools do not appear frequently on our daily security updates.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Mr. Hughes. And, well, I think Ms. Cosby and Ms. Burke ended up addressing some of the questions that I had. But I didn't, you know, to be completely honest with you, I didn't find the, a couple of the responses that I've heard so far to be that satisfying. One in particular is with respect to how we intend to expand on these programs. So I am curious to hear more detail. I know that you said that you need to loop back in with the superintendent, and that's completely fine, but I would like to see more detail about, in the near future, if possible, about what the expansion of these programs look like, and a little bit more detail about how involved the training is from a culture and climate standpoint, and with respect to the trauma-informed practices. So that would be very helpful. The other piece, you know, I'm glad that we have started with pilots at a number of our schools, and I am interested to hear what success that we're seeing, as Mr. Young alluded to. But I do, I do want to have a better idea of how we're going to drive systemic change with respect to our trauma-informed practices. And eleven schools is a good start, but I'd like, I'd like to see, to see how we continue to build on that. And, you know, I heard you say that we can't necessarily correlate with results, but that we do expect suspensions to, long-term suspensions to drop. I am glad that, that the long-term suspensions will be dropping, but I want to make sure that, that those drops are happening as a result of support that we're providing. So I'm curious to have more detail about that, understanding that we can't necessarily track every dollar and, and how that correlates to a reduction in long-term suspensions or anything like that. But more information would be helpful on many of these points.
Ms. Page, then Ms. Gibson, then Mr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Hughes, for this information. Um, thank you, Mr. Hughes, for this information. A lot of my questions too have been answered by, um, by my colleagues, because I shared some of the same sentiments. Um, yeah. 11 part to schools versus all of our schools, classroom management, trauma-informed practices, because what one teacher or principal at school A view as problematic may not be the same at school B, based on not wanting to highlight the school for their, um, you know, disciplinary actions. And some of our schools are not reporting it. So, um, this is not a cookie cutter. And I too would like to see more details and how do we move forward? Um, because it's good that we starting somewhere, but we need to expand more, because, no, we do need to expand more, because I don't think 11 schools...
Going to cut it?
I don't disagree that ultimately we do need to expand more. What I will say is, to participate in this training requires, it will require our teachers to spend time outside of school hours. And the reason we started with 11 schools is to balance, is filling up as a teacher, this is too much. If you look at what we are attempting to roll out throughout the division, we are clearly... What I will say is, we clearly have priorities that need to take precedence over other priorities, but we also have to be careful not to burn our teachers out by putting too much on their plate too quickly. Which is why we were very intentional around the selection of these 11 schools. Because what I will tell you is, the goal to end up participating in, say, the restorative, um, practices work, we're looking to ask those individuals to spend five to 10 hours outside of school hours receiving additional professional development for Dr. McGod. That's, that's not going to be an easy ask, especially if you're a teacher who believes that you don't have class management issues.
Oh, but we do. And so I'm looking for more details sooner rather than later. Because some schools do have issues, just haven't, haven't been identified.
Ms. Gibson, then Mr. Young, then Ms. Cosby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so, uh, the first thing I want to note is, I, I have a real problem with the, with the term classroom management in general. From my perspective, it connotes that, um, one, that the teachers are the problem. And two, that we're not dealing with people, we're dealing with animals that need to be managed. These are, these are students. And so I, I think it's worth considering, um, the, uh, the tone and how we're approaching this overall. I, I'm concerned that, um, it feels fragmented. So we've got some people that are getting trained on trauma over here, we've got some people over here that are chained on, uh, you know, restorative justice. You know, ultimately, um, and you know, I'm not an educator, I'm just a parent. But from my perspective, ultimately, what needs to happen is, teachers need to have the resources to be able to identify what's going on with the kids in their class, and then figure out the supports to be able to help them. And some students may have, uh, disability, some students may have an issue at home, some students, um, you know, may have other, other factors. But at the end of the day, what I believe we're trying to do, what I hope we're trying to do, is change the school culture from one that believes that we've got bad kids that need to be fixed to recognizing that there are no bad kids, there are problems that need to be solved. And so my ask is that we look at the system holistically and figure out how we can begin to create that culture. One place that I think it is important to look at is the score document. The score document is really the, 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 the piece of policy where we put our practice to work. And so, um, we made, there are a number of changes that were made to the, to the score document last year. I have concerns that there are, uh, a lot of school leaders and, and teachers that haven't really fully, uh, been able to get trained and understand, um, you know, all of the new procedures in that document. And then I also have concern that the document doesn't fully reflect what we're, you know, what we're, what we are aiming to do. You know, how is restorative justice reflected in that document? And in how we're approaching not just the kids in the 11 schools, but every student in the district? So, uh, the, the other piece that I want to, um, highlight is, is just a concern, because just as we'd say that no student is bad, you know, I don't think any of our teachers are bad, and I certainly don't think our principals are bad. And so it concerned me that it sounds like, um, uh, certain principals have been cherry-picked to, to have these programs in place. And I'm concerned about the message that that sends to the rest of the principals and the rest of the staff in the school system. So, um, so, yeah, so I, I, I think that we need to go look, uh, at that score document and begin there, and then figure out how we can work backwards to get the, um, to get the supports in place and the, and to truly change the culture of the way we're delivering, um, support to the, to the kids in the schools. Thank you.
Mr. Young, then Ms. Cosby.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me a second bite at the apple. I was attempting to be really measured my, my first go around, but Kenya said it a little better than I do. I, I get really uncomfortable, honestly, when, uh, when we assume so many of the shortcomings in our classrooms can be attributed to our teachers. And, uh, that, that's not to say, uh, look, uh, everyone has different capabilities. And I'm very excited that we are benchmarking long-term, long-time best practices, not new. But just wanted to acknowledge Kenya's point, because she said it more artfully than I did. But, uh, on a substantive issue, uh, thanks, Harry. You shared, you shared that they were, we were going to measure, principally, we were going to measure at least pertinent to number of suspensions and also school satisfaction. And I think those are good. I suspect everybody up here agrees that, uh, that those would be good ways to measure it. But I do, at the risk of putting words in Scott's mouth, I, I do have some reservation about the school suspension piece. Again, I do think that's a relevant element to measure pertinent to if this is, uh, if this is working or not. But I thi- I think it leaves something out, because I, I'm always concerned about, as policymakers, providing, what we could call perverse incentives for our building leaders or CEOs, to do things that may not be truly representative of what we would like. So, uh, for my colleagues, I'd really welcome a conversation relevant to maybe incorporating a third element, and specifically Cheryl spoke to it a moment ago, there's discipline incidents. I mean, we, on average, I think, uh, it's 25,000 discipline incidents in a year, not students who have participated in, uh, in community circles or in any kind of, uh, trauma-informed care, if there is some kind of, uh, recidivism and what that, what, what that looks like. I think that that, I'd invite my colleagues to join in that conversation. I'm not discounting the student satisfaction and the suspensions, but I, I just, I don't think that that fully covers it. That's my two sons. But, um, Mr. Hughes, I suspect you've got some thoughts on that.
I appreciate you all, when we talk about we need to be careful about the words we use, we need to be measured. I believe was the appropriate term, or the exact term. So Ms. Gibson, I agree with you wholeheartedly. The lens that we should take, it's not that there is a problem with this child, but it is something is happening in this child's life that is causing him or her to misbehave, and we need to connect with our social workers, our guidance counselor, our CIS, attendance liaisons, and a whole group of individuals to figure out, like, what is happening with that child. So definitely. My reservation or hesitation based on what I've heard tonight is the message that we are sending, or the message I personally, just speaking for myself, believe we are sending about the state of our schools. The vast majority of our classrooms are conducive to teaching and learning. The vast majority of our new teachers are not struggling with effectively helping students to grow academically and socially. It is the reason why I have asked you all, and the offer still stands, to walk with me on unannounced visits. Because when you walk with me on unannounced visits, you will see that this is not the core of RPS. This is a small piece, that the vast majority of our schools, fantastic environments. We have walked together where we have seen situations where it is actually the teaching and learning that is happening in the classroom that is attributing to the behavior management, not the children themselves, which, that's an academic issue, which is why our principals and assistant principals and coaches and then, and everybody else who's been in the classroom support them. So I just don't want to send a message that we believe that school's out of control, classes are out of control, that actually all my unannounced visits, and again, my visits are unannounced, and we have gone to some of what you would call the toughest schools in RPS. It's a very small piece of the pie.
Okay. Ms. Cosby, and then I, after that, I really would like to, um, stop this, because we have something that we weren't able to do early on, and we need to do. Okay? So, Ms. Cosby.
Um, just very quickly, so if you can go back to the section that talks about, um, uh, anyway, my student leaders, student leaders, student leaders in relation. So we just heard, um, in our presentation portion, um, from Community of Caring. So I want to know, as we're doing this, how are we merging? So we do have, um, a program in regional public schools. And how do we kind of merge and give more support to this community of caring? Where you have the five pillars of what caring, respect, responsibility, and trust, family. Okay? And so instead of it being so, Ms. Gibson used the word fragmented, so, you know, you have something here, you have... But how can we start to bring everything together so that we have a more robust and holistic approach? As opposed to, I'm doing this over here, I'm doing that over here, I'm doing this.
That's an excellent point. I do believe that at some point very soon, we need to determine if we want to use a, like, a core values model to roll out in all of our schools. Because right now, what we are missing in our schools is common, common language around values, which you just alluded to. So I do think there's opportunity there to have a discussion around perhaps bringing in a character education program in RPS.
Well, okay. You just said bringing in a character. All right, so we do have Community of Caring.
Right, but I mean, across the system, so it doesn't feel fragmented.
Well, we can have Community of Caring, which has been, how long have we been doing?
Since 2010.
Since 2010. I'm not, well, you, I'm just saying, as opposed to bringing in something different, let's just look at that and expand it across the board and how we can support it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Let's go back to our recognition 2.01. Our January 2020 student representative, Cory Stuckey, is now here, and we want to recognize him. Mr. Kamras?
Yes, uh, it's good to see you, Cory. Thank you so much for making it, and we were not able to recognize you earlier, but we are glad to be able to DSA this evening. Again, thank you so much for the contributions you have made throughout the conversations. You've actually informed some of the budget conversations in very helpful ways. And I think that is really an example of what we most aspire for our students, is that, um, they are prepared to be leaders in their own right, advocate for themselves and their futures. And so, uh, we're just thrilled to have had you part of this process. And, um, as with Ty, continue to be thrilled with what comes next for you. And so if you can come on up, let's, uh, take a picture and give Cory a big round of applause.
I just wanted to say something in response to Mr. Young. Because I was, just, I mean, I walked in kind of late while I was having a conversation. I heard a lot of talk about the teachers and all. I just wanted to say, like, Mrs. Burke said earlier, you can't really train a teacher how to effectively be a great teacher. Because that all comes from within the heart. A teacher has to really love doing what she does to be able to effectively teach our kids. So I was just saying, like, yeah, we have a lot of programs that teach students, how to teach the kids, how to train, how to work effectively in classrooms, but I feel like that comes from within the soul. So you bring a lot of teachers to training, but they're not effectively really loving their job and loving being around the kids. Like what you said earlier, in this conversation, some teachers are scared and afraid of their kids. So they're not really loving their job, no kid to be able to strike the parents and teachers' heart, that's what they love to do. So teachers really take control of what they're doing in their classrooms. So, um, I really understand the programs they're saying, and I understand how it is going to work. And I understand what he's coming from, I'm saying that he has 11 schools right now, it's just like a test trial, because him trying to expand way too fast, we can just call it a catastrophe. I can't say the word, starts with a C.
Catastrophe?
There we go. So I understand why he's taking his sweet, not sweet time. I understand why he's taking his time with moving everything along, because rushing everything could just mess everything up. So I understand from that point of view. But I feel like the teachers should really understand their kids more better. And instead of, um, adding all the new programs, like you were saying, there's a lot of programs out there already that already exist that you can just break into the schools that won't take as much time as bringing new programs. Like, there's little small programs that we have open in schools, like my school, which I started a program called Brothers Rig and Bread. Because yeah, that's working with the kids, with the teachers. So it's not really, like, taking up all their time after school, or Saturdays, Sundays, just working with the kids during the school hours. Because there's a lot of millennials that are misguided, that say their parents are only thugs because they don't really realize what their future has to hold for them. They watch YouTube videos and Instagram videos and are misled by all the games and rappers and everything else. So that's why we have teachers that have been there and done that, that can teach their enrollment and be role models to the kids during the schools. So instead of trying to add all these new programs that are going to take away time for the teachers to actually have planning, actually learn how to effectively love their children, we can just add a new program that's already there. So it's already, you know, work for...
Thank you, Cory. Okay. And before Ty leaves us for the evening, what would you like to share with us?
Thank you. Well, I would just thank the board for allowing me to represent for this month. I learned a lot from being able to participate in the school, like, in the school system this way. And I have a lot to learn from Cory, so I applaud him big on that. And yes, I'd just like to thank you all for this great learning experience.
Well, thank you so much, Ty. Okay. Now we will move on to item 5.01, receive quarterly financials for Patrick Henry.
Good evening, School Board Representatives and Superintendent Kamras. I'm Tara Wiley, I'm the chair of the Board of Patrick Henry's School of Science and Arts. I'd like to apologize for our absence from the last board meeting. We're in a moment of transition and are currently recruiting a new treasurer. So I'm glad to be able to be here to make the report this evening. If I could draw your attention to our balance sheet. Currently in our checking and savings, we've got $7,000. Here we have $7,241.62. And then current liabilities are $2,189.07. The temporarily restricted assets total, which is at the bottom, is $329,660. And there is sufficient cash to cover liabilities and charitable assets. I also wanted to make one clarification. Our previous treasurer, Lorna Lighthall, reached out to Dr. Supini and Mr. Young this past fall regarding a legend shortfall, which was due to an increase in teacher salaries and staff raises in the past fall. And she quoted, I made a presentation at our December board meeting, which Dr. Supini and Mr. Young attended about this $200,000 shortfall. And we did a little bit of digging, and I met with Braga, and discovered that it is actually a $100,000 shortfall. So I wanted to correct the error that she presented in December. And thank you all for finding part of that funding. It was presented as a dire circumstance where we might not make it through to the end of the year, but we've been able to reallocate funding from a vacant position and our position to make it through the year without removing that $100,000.
Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you very much for coming out and providing a little bit more clarity on the issue of the shortfall. Can you give a little bit more detail about how it wasn't accounted for? Was that a communication breakdown between the bodies, or is there?
It was. The, we received our funding level this coming year before I became Board Chair. And I was not made aware of the shortfall until much later. Our bookkeeper, Monica Chambers, let us know this fall of the shortfall. And, and the miscalculation was simply on her part and it was pretty unfortunate. And so looking at options for avoiding this kind of speculation, we're sure.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Ms. Page.
Thank you. So do you have any oversight on your board for that position?
We, we have a board treasurer, we have a position of board treasurer. We had a treasurer roll up just before I became the chair. And then we have gone through a series of treasurers. It's an unfortunate fact that we have to report that the person who would be directly overseeing the bookkeeper has been changing every few months. And so that is how things like this continue to fall through the cracks.
So is just one person that's the treasurer? And there's no checks and balances for that position on the board?
Ms. Chambers makes monthly financial report, and we have an opportunity to ask her questions. But otherwise, she does work just directly with the treasurer. Others on the board are serving on other committees like facilities and education. And so as a small working board, it is, it is one person who oversees. She works closely with our principal as well. But the principal did not bring the shortfall to our attention either as a problem. They had already indicated to us that the shortfall was going to be any sort of problem until just leave this fall, which was the time this brought to the attention of Dr. Supini and Mr. Young. The board understood before then, or was led to believe that it could not be issued. And now we've been able to find a way to make it work since we've stepped in and have that closer oversight.
Anything else, all right? Thank you very much, Ms. Wiley. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Young.
Tara, can you remind the board of what percentage of monies that you spend as it relates to RPS as a whole? What's your expended, per capita expenditures look like?
I'm not sure that I can actually, you may be asking the wrong person. Are you talking about our funding? So that's actually a sticky response, which is why I said I'm not sure that I can. We are funded at 75% of what other schools are given in our large bucket of funding we receive per year. In my most recent meeting with Lorna Lighthall, she said that it doesn't actually work out annually to 75%. That's not, that's not a hard number that was ever agreed upon. It, it tends to be something in the neighborhood of 75%, which is why that number is often used casually. But that there is not a hard request, 75%.
Thank you, Madam Chair, it's 75, 75%.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you very much. All right, moving on to 5.02, the financial statement. Okay, who's that? Oh, Ms., there she is, sitting in the back.
Good evening, Madam Chair, I'm Dr. Jere Horford, Superintendent Kamras. In your package this evening for your review of the local financial report for the period ending January of 2020. And we are looking fine, our revenues are trending, as to be expected. Expenditures are looking good. And you know, we, we very much try to track the non-contracted salary line. And we're doing okay with it. We are spending a little bit more to date this year than we did last year, but that's going to be expected to look like $100,000. It doesn't concern me, so I wanted you to know how we're trending. May I answer any questions?
Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. The only question I have is, I think, a question that came up, and I think I've asked, regarding the trailer cost and whether, how we were tracking with that annual expense. If you could speak a bit to that.
Yes, it, it looks like we will, we will spend about $540,000 this year on trailer rentals, if you will. It is not budgeted in our operating budget. It's something that historically we've covered out of capital. But now that we don't have any cash remaining in our capital accounts, this will be something that we'll have to cover with our operating budget.
Okay, so I assume somebody will at some point bring that to us, okay? Ms. Dorr.
Just to piggyback off of Ms. Gibson's question, my understanding is that the reason we can't use capital dollars is because the city has determined that it's an operating expense. But that we also theorize that the definite, the way that there potentially might be some room for interpretation on CapEx versus OpEx, and that we, there might be sort of different methodologies that we could explore. Is that correct?
We can ask, when we entered into this, it's flat out a lease. It's, we're renting these trailers.
We're not buying it.
For a year, correct. It wasn't entered into as a capital lease. We can certainly ask, but I know for a while, when we had to install or do improvements, the city let us use capital money for those things as it became a permanent fixture, if you will, but not the month-to-month lease on the building itself.
Gotcha.
Ms. Cosby.
Thank you. Ms. Braga, I know you said that we are, you're not alarmed, we're on track, all that good stuff. Okay, walk me through, help me to wrap my brain around this, because I'm having difficulty. So we're on track, however, when I look at some of these positions that are being, I'm saying it wrong. The budget is being adjusted to more accurately reflect some positions.
For fiscal '21.
For fiscal '21.
Yes. And why are we not concerned about fiscal '20?
If, because it's around, it's over $300,000, I would say, in terms of adjustments.
Right, but remember, we, most of those folks did not start until line one.
Okay.
So we've got, we've got our turnover factor, if you will, to account for those folks that have come in. Some of them haven't even, didn't start until maybe after the first year. So we've got a, we have enough resources and that's quite important to trouble the folks coming in because they didn't start at the beginning of the contract year.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you, Ms. Braga. All right, and now we come to the superintendent's proposed budget. And basically, I think tonight, if there are changes that you want to make to take things out of the proposed budget, I think that should be the focus. So we don't stay here till 3:00 in the morning, just as a personal preference. So here we go, Mr. Kamras.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few introductory notes. So you should all now have the updated spreadsheet on the large paper. Just to orient everybody, everything in red are the revisions to the initial proposal. Everything in yellow and red is the sort of second round of revisions based on the feedback you all provided at our last meeting. Just so you can kind of make your way through the document. As you'll see, we eliminated a number of central office positions per the feedback and reduced some other line items. I do want to note that I did fail to capture in the total school FTEs, the five preschool specials teachers. So that 183 should actually be 188. My apologies for that, on the very last page where we have the total new school FTEs. But again, this captures all of the changes that we have discussed so far. I also want to draw everyone's attention to, you should have your binder, the full budget book, which incorporates all of these changes. As I shared in my email today, I'm not sure everyone had a chance to read that. Just a few notes, if you turn to page 23, I believe it is. Yes, you're going to see a smaller version of the big sheet, 23 to 29, just so that you all have it in the same place in one binder. So this reflects everything that's on the book sheet, just without a few columns, so that you're able to read it all. But this is the summary of all the discussions we've been having thus far. And then, as I shared in the email as well, in Area 11, which is called the district-wide area, if you turn to page 143, you'll see about 75% of the way down says 5140 strategic plan. And that's where all of the strategic plan funds are sitting currently, so that you can see them all. It continues on to page 144. First, it goes through salaries and benefits, and then it goes through other expenditures. So I want to make sure everyone saw that. And then a note about the school-based budgets. They are largely unchanged from the adopted, I'm sorry, amended budget from earlier this year. And let me just explain that for a second. Obviously, there will be significant changes to our school budgets for next year, in part pending on what happens with our budget asks. So for example, we are currently asking for 12 AP teachers. If we get those 12 AP teachers, then we'll go through the process of figuring out how many go to With, how many go to Marshall, and so on. And those funds will be moved into the school budget, so you'll see those positions show up. But the funds for those 12 AP teachers are sitting in that strategic plan bucket that I just drew your attention to right now. Now, you'll see at the school budgets, and I'll just use an example, if we go to Bellevue, because I think it's the first one, on page 43, I believe, or 44. There are a few small changes right now to the school budgets, and I want to explain what is driving this. So if you look at Bellevue on page 44, you'll see the instructional administration line has decreased by $11,930. Why? Because last year, a veteran principal retired and was replaced by a less veteran principal who gets paid less. And so that shows that decrease there. There's also a small decrease in labor, that refers to custodial staff. So again, there was likely a shift in the custodians, and one that was hired was slightly less experienced, so there's a smaller cost. You may also see in the other expenditures categories, some slight increases or decreases. And that's because of enrollment-driven allocations. So if the enrollment went up from September of 19 to September of 20, you're going to see a little bit more there. If enrollment went down, you'll see a little bit less there. Again, though, this does not account for anything that we built into the strategic plan that would ultimately be allocated if it were to be funded. But if, based on our mark from the city and ultimate action of the General Assembly, once we know how much money we have, once we've done prioritization from the board, then we're going to be able to start determining exactly how many of those AP teachers go where. The other point I just want to note is we are still engaged in the grandfathering process, and we're still finalizing our enrollment numbers for next year. We should have that in the next couple of weeks. And then that will be then also used to do equalization. So, and we heard earlier that TJ is going to have more students, so TJ is going to get more teachers. Bushal is going to have fewer students because of rezoning, so they'll have fewer teachers. And we'll make all those adjustments once we have all of our final numbers for rezoning at specialty schools and all that sort of thing. So that's why you don't see that represented in the school budgets. The last thing I did want to note is, you'll see the school budgets starting on 44, but then you're going to see them again in Area 11, the district-wide. So let me draw your attention to page 142. And if you go about halfway down, you'll see Blackwell there, and then you'll see Carver. The schools listed here are showing increases from the equity fund or from mid-year changes. For example, as you may recall, we added extra ESL teachers this year. And so that is also showing up here. But if I can just draw your attention for a second to Blackwell, that is, those are funds for the equity fund. You'll see in the amended budget FY '20 that they spent on, or going to spend or are spending on materials and supplies and books and equipment. In budget FY '21, you'll see it's zero because we haven't decided as a body yet where the equity fund, if it were funded, will go next year. So it's just showing as zero because no decision has been made as to where it would go next year. So that explains the schools that show up here. So that explains the schools that show up here. I think those are all the introductory notes. As Ms. Owen indicated, certainly if there is consensus around additional changes that the board feels strongly about, that would be helpful to know, so that we can update everything in time for you for next week's meeting, when we will be voting to then send the document on to the mayor. I do want to note the largest ticket item that there's still to be, I think finalized or consensus achieved, is really on the raise. Parenthetically, the House and the Senate, in the Assembly, both came out with their budgets. One body put out a two percent raise for FY twenty-one, and another two percent raise for FY twenty-two. The other body did a three percent bonus, so that's not a raise, it's a one-time bonus. And then a four percent raise in FY twenty-two. My hunch is that the ultimate budget that comes forth will likely have some amount of raise in, probably in both years. I think the two and the two is probably most likely at this point, but obviously, there's still lots of discussion to happen. So just have that in the back of your mind, as a reminder, even if that were to pass, that's not two percent fully funded by the state. It would be, for us, about a third funded by the state and about two-thirds funded by us. Just so you can kind of keep that all in your head as we're having the discussion tonight.
It's not even fifty-fifty?
No, unfortunately.
All right. Mr. Young, and then Ms. Gibson.
I think Kenya beat me to the punch. Glad to defer to her, she liked.
Thank you, Mr. Young. So my, we have one comment and then one suggestion in terms of moving forward. So the, the comment is that, you know, I'm, I, when I get the budget document, I generally flip through, and, and the line item that I, you know, I, I focus on, because I know that's where our constituents have been focused, is, is on that object code, the administration object code. So that is five-eleven, and it's page thirty-three in the document. And this is a line item we've talked about before. But, you know, I mean, so going back to, I've pulled up the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen budget document, and at that time, there were thirteen FTEs in that, and this is kind of the, the top line item in terms of salaries. And at that point, you know, so it showed back in twenty-sixteen, the actual was one point four million, and then it increased to one point six million in fiscal year twenty-eighteen. And in this budget document, we're showing now, it's at, it's, the actual in twenty-nineteen was two point four million, and that the proposed budget for that, again, those, those real top positions, has ballooned to three point eight million dollars. Which I just, I, I think that's important to, to, to be very cognizant of, as we're going through this process. My suggestion is, from a process standpoint, and I know this is an approach we've taken in prior years, is to frankly, because this is a huge ask, we're talking about forty-two million dollars more in our budget, in our needs-based budget. And so I think before we submit a budget that is requesting, you know, a, a large amount, we, we want to make sure that, that we've truly scrutinized, and, and that we feel very confident about it. And so my request is, is that we go simply line by line, and, and talk about each line item as a board, and, and decide, you know, how we want to move forward. I, I don't see any other way to do it, because I know we want to get that, we want to get consensus. But, but I think, I think that would, that would be the, the smartest approach. Thank you.
All right. Can I see a show of hands of people who would like to go through this line by line? So five.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Okay.
Are we going through this line by line or that line by line? This, okay.
Okay, the, the big page. Okay. So I've got one, two, three, four, five. Okay? So that's the majority. And then, Mr. Young, are you, now want to talk? Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And thank you, Kenya. I do concur with your recommendation. And I disseminated, prior to our arrival this evening, a, a document that you're in receipt of electronically. But thank you, Madam Clerk, for printing a few copies. It's a pleasure of the group. I would like to share what may be easier to review. Not, not fully this evening. My intent is to introduce budget amendments on the twenty-fourth, but specifically for the benefit of the audience who don't have this document in front of them. Yours truly is introduced, twenty point six million dollars in cuts, and five point six million dollars in a teacher bonus that would supplement the compensation, along with the step increase. So I do look forward to, I think what Ms. Gibson recommended makes sense, to proceed with the line-by-line items. I've identified many of them herein, twenty point six million dollars specifically of cuts. So look forward to, to that. But I do, and I, just for the purpose right now, before I hush, I do look forward to conversation, continuing the conversation relevant to compensating our teachers. And I hope that, if I may, at the risk of putting words in Kenya's mouth, I do look forward to having that discussion relevant to who we're, who we're rewarding most, and, and providing financial support, additional financial support to folks in the buildings and the front lines in lieu of, in lieu of hiring more persons downtown in the central office. That continues to, to be a, a real concern of mine. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Camaras, shall we just start with section two? Or do you want to start with, I guess, start section one? I'm sorry, I saw health insurance costs first, and I'm like, there's not really much to talk about with health insurance costs. Okay? So I, any discussion on the annual step increase? But if you have a change to propose, I would say, we'll go through it line by line, but let's, if you have a change to propose, otherwise, let's keep moving. This is a lot. Okay? So you have a, a change to propose, Mr. Young, in our first step increase.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay? Step increase. All right? Moving on. Three percent raise for teachers and all other staff. Ms. Gibson?
Yes. I'm sorry. So I do, I would support increasing the step increase. And I, I'm open to, you know, what the amount is, but it, even if we were to placeholder, say, an additional million dollars in that line item, and then work backwards to see what that additional would work out to in terms of the, in terms of the percentage. My hope is that we get that step increase closer to inflation.
Can I, can I see a show of hands on those who would support changing the step increase? Two, all right. Three, two and a half? Okay. All right. Then, that's not a majority. So, you have a proposal? Okay. Three percent raise for teachers, next. Anybody propose a change? Ms. Cosby?
I propose going up to the four percent that we had talked about, one of the suggestions. What, whether it's an eight point nine?
Ms. Cosby is proposing four percent raise. Can I see a show of hands on that one? One, two, three, four, five. That is a majority. Okay? Then, projected increase in health insurance costs. I don't think we can, I don't think we can do much about that one. All right? And moving on down to priority one, rigorous teaching and learning. Maintain ten and add ten art, music, language, PE teachers. No changes proposed? All right. Funds for additional musical instruments for equity of offerings. Any change recommended there? Is that a hand up, Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I do have a question about how many, how many schools we think we can impact with a hundred thousand dollars. I know some of these instruments can, can be pretty pricey. And same goes with science equipment. And art supplies.
And not physical education?
And physical, so, I mean, it, it does seem, I, I think it moves a needle, so I'm, I'm encouraged by that. I'll reserve comment on that at this point.
Okay. Ms. Gibson, are you proposing a change for one of those?
So, I, I'm cognizant of the, you know, I think, obviously, I, I don't debate the need for, for all of these things. I also would like to know more, even if it doesn't impact our budget now, you know, how far this money will, will, will get us as it, you know, we're making decisions for, for future years. I think that's important to know. I, I'm, I recognize particularly with art supplies, that that one, I would propose at least getting that one to match it at a hundred thousand dollars, because, you know, I don't know, what are the art teachers supposed to do? And, and I believe that the amount that art teachers are given as a stipend is significantly lower in the city than it is in the counties. And so, so.
For materials?
For, for, for art materials. And so I, I think it would be helpful to have a, a benchmark of where we're at in terms of those costs relative to the surrounding counties. Because, you know, I mean, you, you, you can't do really anything without art supplies in an art class.
Okay. So this is a proposal to change seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand, funds for additional art supplies for equity of offerings at high-priority schools. Can I see a show of hands for those who would support that raise? Two, three, four, five, six. Okay, that's the majority. Ms. Page?
Madam Chair, I want to go back to the raise. I'm in support of our teachers and staff, but what I'm concerned, I guess I need clarity. So the state is proposing two percent raise in their budget.
But they would only pay less than one percent of that.
And so.
Right?
If I may, just clarify. The state hasn't settled on anything yet. There's the House version of the budget and the Senate version of the budget. They're different.
Right.
I was reflecting on, I think it is likely that a two percent in FY twenty-one and a two percent in FY twenty-one will come out of the Assembly, perhaps more, but I think that appears to be likely. If that were the case, we would get about a third of the cost of a two percent raise for FY twenty-one. We would pay the rest of it. And then, as the Board has indicated, if we went to a four percent raise, we would pay the full cost of the additional two percent.
So what I worry about is the funding piece. We proposed four, but the funding is not there to support the four percent raise. And then we would have to make cuts. You know, if the funding is not there. So, I'm, that concerns me. That really concerns me. So, I just want to say that on the record. Because we still not sure about the state funding, and we not sure about city funding. So, we just got a lot of work ahead of us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate Ms. Page's comments. And I'm concerned about it, too. Frankly, I'm concerned about it with respect to a lot of the line items in our, in our budget, but I still think we have an obligation to continue to advocate for what we think our teachers and staff deserve. Four, four percent is pretty significant. I think a, a step increase would be pretty significant. I think five percent would have been more significant, and it's something that I, I, you know, think could have been entertained as well. But, but I think that staying with four percent is, is a fairly reasonable position to hold at this point. And of course, with respect to many of the issues in our budget, many of them could and very well likely be subject to cuts. And my hope is that, as the public reviews this and understands what we're prioritizing, and understands how important many of these items are, that we'll see support when it comes to continued advocacy on the state level, but also on the local level. Because it's, the, the, there aren't, there aren't, I don't think there's gonna be that many, and hopefully not many, but I'd say most of the issues that we're, we're putting in this are, are needs of the school division. And, and our teachers certainly deserve the support, but I appreciate that comment.
Okay. Ms. Page?
So I don't disagree with that, but I'm looking at the support positions that we have in this budget, that our schools so rightly deserve and need. So I'm just looking at the big picture, big picture. And, because yes, our teachers, staff deserve this and more. And, and we really hope that we have support from the members in the community to, you know, for advocacy. But I want to be realistic as well.
Okay. So there were five people who voted for the four percent. I mean, who indicated support for four percent. Okay. There were five noses that indicated support, if I'm counting noses. Would any of those five want to reconsider? Okay. Then, we are moving on to maintain passion for learning design team three positions. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The superintendent and I, we had an opportunity to converse about, about the pilot. And I, I am very excited and optimistic about passion for learning and everything that that can constitute for our students. Let me be measured herein how I address this subject. I am not particularly satisfied with where we're at now in regards to passion for learning. It's not, it's not per se what, what I envisioned, for all kinds of reasons that I could elaborate, elaborate on if there's an interest. But I do look forward to us adopting passion for learning. I do have concerns about where we're at. So thereto, I propose, on my colleague.
So what is your proposal here?
So my proposal is to strike from one point one, action one point one, the design team along with that, three hundred twenty thousand dollars, along with the two million dollars in the next line item.
Okay. Well, let's, let's do them one at a time.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
All right. So, Mr. Young is proposing that we strike in action one point one, maintain passion for learning design team. And if you are in favor of this striking, please raise your hand.
Can I say something?
Oh, yes, you can say something.
Well, I do want to note that if you were to take this action, number one, you will be terminating an existing, I'm sorry, two existing employees. And number two, we will no longer have the ability to pursue what
And number two, we will no longer have the ability to pursue what is the very first item in our strategic plan, arguably one of, if not the most important one, which is dedicated to launching two very exciting STEM academies this fall that have already been widely publicized, that there's interest in, that families have already made choices about in the open enrollment system, and would be an incredible breach of faith with our families and the public. So the administration strongly disagrees respectfully with Mr. Young's proposal.
So these positions are for the STEM academies?
Ultimately, they are for all of the work that this will involve. Right now, they're focused on the STEM academies.
Okay. So, given that information, Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, you know, the STEM academies, I'm eager to get more details. And particularly, I want to have a better sense of what are the resources that we currently have in those schools and what are the specific plan to complement and enhance those at each school? And I think at Henderson, I know, you know, there is an opportunity to add more teaching staff for electives and even some of the core classes. And so, you know, I really want to see how the academy is going to fit into what the overall school needs are. So I think it's critical that we have the funding to be able to do that for, you know, in terms of the $2 million for that. But I do want to consider, again, as we've been talking a lot about central office, I wonder if we look at maintaining the two positions that we have in place for passion for learning so that we aren't adding additional central office staff at this time.
Just one note, the Board has directed the administration to launch specialty programs at Bellevue and Carver next fall. So again, those things don't just happen, they require a great deal of planning if they are to be successful. The third position here that we're hiring would focus on those two schools to launch those, along with planning for Bouchal, which we've discussed would be next at the middle school level. So I certainly understand the Board's desire to be thoughtful about adding resources at the central office. My priority is always to get resources to schools. That being said, we do need to have some capacity to do some of the things that we have said we want to do, if we're going to do them well. We can continue to sort of cut back and shoestring a lot of these things that we collectively have agreed to doing. I just think ultimately the product will not be one that we're proud of. And so that is why these positions are here.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have a question. When we initially talked about making these two school STEM academies, part of the rationale was that there was going to be state funding or available for the programs. And so I would like to hear from the administration what those funds are and how they plan to be used. You know, so I'd like to get more detail on that. And if there are any requirements on using them, how those requirements are going to be impacting the programming in those buildings. And then I also want to point out that, you know, Bimford, the middle school program, is a very successful school, I think, by many people's measures. And I don't believe at the launch of that school that there was a dedicated staff person, you know, specifically for that program. There was a lot of, you know, a lot of collaboration. That said, look, I want to ensure that we do have the people to do the work, but I also want to make sure that we are growing our central office staff, you know, at a pace that is also in line with the additional staff needs that we have in our school buildings.
All right, on this line item about the design team, if you support Mr. Young's proposal to eliminate those positions, could I see your hand? Okay, I believe the majority wants to keep them. And then you also said you wanted to eliminate staff, materials, and contracted services for the STEM academies. Is there any discussion about that, or? Okay, Mr. Young?
Just briefly, and I'm not going to belabor the point, but I do want to, I guess, beat the dead horse. Want this to happen, I just, what's materializing today is not what I anticipated. I would like for us to revisit this, go and do something very differently in passion for learning than what I see materializing. So that's the impetus for my proposal, thank you.
Okay. You have, Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Mr. Young, is your proposal still to cut all of that because you, so, in, how do we fund the STEM academies at MLK and Henderson if we make all of those cuts? Are you anticipating that would materialize in a way where we'd have private donors or something along those lines? I mean, what's the expectation there?
Yeah, let me be blunt. So what I see right now, and I'm prepared to be generous about this, but what I see now is semantics. I see the same students at the same school with the same instructors, arguably with largely the same curriculum and us slapping a new name on it and pretending like we've done something, so that I will not support.
Well, how do you do anything but that if you're not putting the funds there to fund the updates?
That's what I think we're doing with that $2 million, that's my concern.
Yes, Mr. Cameras?
Respectfully, Mr. Young, I think your characterization of what we're planning to do is completely off base. We're trying to do something actually pretty innovative and radical, which typically is something that you gravitate towards, so I'm not quite sure why you are taking issue with this. It will not be, it will not be what we are doing now with a banner out front. And we are working very hard to rethink things from an academic perspective, culture perspective, time perspective, family engagement perspective, everything, to create a really rigorous and exciting learning environment for our students. In our previous conversation, I think one of the sticking points that I understand it for you is that it should be selective, and that is just philosophically a disagreement that we have. I think the whole point of passion for learning is to provide these experiences for all of our children, and that we have to create learning environments that meet the needs of all of our children, and that takes a lot of investment and innovative thinking. So I know we disagree philosophically on this, but the reason we're making such a huge investment in the two schools that needed the most based upon student achievement, not that there aren't others and they're coming next year and beyond, but nobody can deny we must do something differently and better for the young people at these two schools. This is a point that Ms. Cosby has made for quite some time and others on this board, and so that's what this investment is all about.
Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't want us to lose sight of our first priority, rigorous teaching and learning. We're in the business of educating children. We're, this is what the heart of Richmond Public Schools or any school system should be about. And we cannot continue to move forward as we did 10 years ago, last year, year before last. We're catching up. We're catching up. So this whole first section, rigorous teaching and learning, just as a young man, Corey, while he's gone now, stated earlier in regards to what's expected and moving forward. Number one, we want teachers to be able to have the materials and the guidance and support they should have in order to teach their children. And we can't do that by standing still where we are and expecting everyone. Mr. Hughes said, how, we can't continue to stretch folks but so far and then expect 1% mastery. So for anything with priority one, rigorous teaching and learning, that's why we exist. That's why the children depend upon us to make decisions on their best behalf. So I'm glad to hear that we're going to raise the amount of money, which is not a lot, with the art supplies, but we just can't keep doing as we've always done. I want to understand personally why we can't even just move through this first section at length, because in my mindset, nothing here is really, it shouldn't be negotiated. We shouldn't, we can't keep taking from our children. Our children deserve better. And we cannot keep nickel and diming our children when it comes to providing. People spoke this afternoon about what children don't have, what classrooms don't have, how many more teachers are needed. But they also need to have up-to-date new resources to be able to do it. And yes, MLK and Henderson, we all know, yes, they need another program to help and be of support. We can't keep teaching and doing as we always have. So I'm sitting here quietly henceforth, but anything with priority one, rigorous teaching and learning, don't ask me, because I'm in it. I'm in it to win it.
Ms. Page?
Ms., my colleague, thank you, Madam Chair, but I think my colleague, Ms. Burke, said it so eloquently. Our children deserve experiences, exposure, so that they are able to compete in this very competitive society. And yes, we need to stop nickel and diming on the resources that our children need. So I'm in agreement. I'm going to be quiet as well, but I'm all support, in support of the rigorous teaching and learning, because that sets the tone. For every child in Richmond Public Schools, you know, we talk about what the counties are doing, but you know what? You don't hear the counties nickel and diming what we're going to do and what we're not going to do. So. And we are not the county. Every locality has different needs, and we want to make sure that our children have the needs and resources that they rightfully deserve.
So. If I could see hands of anyone who supports Mr. Young's recommendation to eliminate action 1.1 staff materials and contracted services for STEM academies at MLK and Henderson? All right, the majority would like to keep that. Okay, moving on to 1.2, materials for new K-2 literacy curriculum, the bulk of the procurement occurring this spring. So this is the remainder. Does anyone have a comment to make on that one? Okay. Could I see hands of anyone who wants to eliminate that? Moving on. Action 1.2, teacher training on the new curricula. Oh, I'm sorry, that's down. Okay, never mind about that one. So, new intensive summer literacy program for rising K-1, 2 students in need of reading support. Thought that was just rising. Okay. Anyone want to eliminate that?
I'm not.
You have a question?
Yes, I'm certainly not interested in eliminating it, but I do, I think we need this documented as to exactly what this is. You know, is it going to be procured by an outside resource? Is it something that can be done internally? How does this pair and complement the YMCA program? You know, I just think it's important to see a complete plan in place.
Well, I am a little confused about it, because I thought this one was going to be rising first graders, the kindergartners who needed additional support. Is that correct?
So Dr. Epps' team has a proposal specifically, so glad to have her bring that to the Board. She's unable to be here this evening, but glad to bring that shortly.
Okay. So in the interim, we'll keep it in the budget? Nods? Okay. Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that that'll be brought to us. I know that we are, we hope to pass this budget at our next meeting, so is that something that we can have sent to us sooner rather than later so we can just review it?
I will certainly try. I don't know.
All right. Okay. Then, I'm trying to make sure, no, so the next one is hard for me to go across. So this one is the literacy intervention staff. One specialist, one coordinator. These are people we already have.
Correct.
And that, so this is just showing you their actual salaries with benefits included. So these are people we already have. Okay? I don't see anybody. All right, literacy institute is later. Books and other resources for culture of reading pilots. We had it this year in the budget, and this is not a change. Anybody? Okay, moving on.
So I just wanted to know, you know, as we, as we continue to move forward and continue to prioritize, this is an item that seems like a one-time item. It also seems like an item that would be well-suited to some type of grant from a community partner. So my suggestion is that we flag certain things like this, that as we continue to refine the budget, this might be an opportunity.
All right, so did you want to take it out at this time? No? Okay. Then the next one is the local match for 15 additional reading specialists and RPS UVA reading specialist endorsement cohort. You don't have that on yours? I'm sorry. Okay, we're going down action 1.2, and we're at local match for 15 additional reading specialists and RPS UVA reading specialist endorsement cohort. Ms. Dorr?
My only comment is I'm, thank you for the flag on local match for state funds, and if we're thinking about packaging priorities, I would say one of my priorities is anything where we can get two-for-one dollars from the state. And so I would be very in support of this and all other items where we can double our money.
Okay. All right, then the next one is funds for additional library books to increase equity at high priority schools, in addition to 200,000 in the regular budget. In other words, to beef up collections in schools that don't have as robust a level of support in their communities. Financial support, I mean. Okay? So be sure and raise your hand if you want to say something or you want to strike anything. All right, so then action 1.3, the first one, materials for the new K-8 math curriculum. Ms. Gibson?
So these are two items that we're waiting for funding from city councils, so I'm wondering what's happening, you know, if we haven't gotten the funds, what's happening, and, you know, is it?
And, um, you know, is it, is it possible to, um, source these any cheaper? Um, uh, and is, it seems like, I guess the other piece that I, it flagged for me is the, on, uh, further down, the Contracted Professional Development for the new curricula at $250,000. Um, you know, I just, I wanna make sure that, um, you know, a, as we're weighing how to proceed, um, you know, that we're, we're, we're exploring all of our options.
Okay. Would you like to comment?
Just to, to answer Ms. Gibson's question. Uh, council voted on January 27th to make the remaining transfers, so the funds are imminently available, but--
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, um, Ms. Dodger Sapini?
Does that go for all the ones that have, uh, waiting for council?
I'm sorry, did I hear--
Is that the same thing for all the other ones that say awaiting council?
Yes, everywhere it says awaiting council was approved on the 27th, yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Uh, thank you. I think i- in regards to all of the positions that are awaiting council and just our spend down, we did say that we wanted a spending plan, just some idea of a spending plan, I believe. So when will we get that? For the money that we've just received from council? Because we have to make a decision with the spending plan, or do we allocate some monies for a fund balance? That was the suggestion by the administration.
Sorry, one second. let, give me, uh, give me a minute to confer with the team to see, um, what the timeline on is. I know we have a, not I know, we have a spend plan for all the dollars. The only question is, um, to what extent can they be expended, given the time that we have left? And so, let me explore that, and I will follow up as soon as I can on that.
Okay, Ms. Page?
I just had a question. Um, what was the date again? You should know from council.
Okay. All right. So seeing no one trying to get rid of those, move down to Action 1.3, Maintain Three Division Literacy. Oh, no, we did that one, right? No, we didn't. The amount adjusted, so these are people we already have, and this is just showing you, um, including benefits. Good to move along? All right, next, Die Pens for Teacher Leaders to Lead Professional Development. This was awaiting council, has now been, um, approved for this year. Keep it for next year? Okay? And then we come to the Contracted Professional Development for the new curricula. And I assume since it's curricula, we're talking about math and reading.
I'm very pleased that we've been able to improve our performance relevant to professional development. I'm still, uh, intuitively, I'm always highly critical of it to be, uh, to be blind. I'd rather spend that, um, money, um, in other places. Thank you.
Anyone in support of striking this line item? Are you?
No.
Oh, no, you have a comment? Yes.
So, who is the, um, the vendor for all of the curriculum? And, um, and given that these are required items, are, are these costs comparable to what we're seeing our, our neighboring and, um, and peer district spending for these particular curriculum pieces?
Go ahead.
Uh, well, for example, this, the Contracted Professional Development, we have an RFP out right now, so we don't have a vendor. Um, so, you know, hopefully, we'll know within the next few weeks, uh, but we're getting bids in now, uh, for these services.
And the materials? She also asked about the--
Yeah, the RFP out for all of it.
All right, Ms. Cosby? Okay? All right, so I didn't see any, um, support for Mr. Young's proposal to eliminate this professional development. So moving down to Action 1.4, um, Communication Materials to Increase Awareness of RPS Advanced and Specialty Programs. This was cut from, um, a proposed $40,000 to $10,000. Any comment? Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I do have, uh, some concerns with, uh, access of many of our students to advanced and specialty programs. Um, it seems to me that, uh, some, some families in particular that may have more challenges with internet access and things of that nature, um, may have a harder time accessing details about these programs, so, uh, what's that? So I, I, I don't recall who requested this, uh, this decrease, but, um, would welcome their input at this point, just so I can--
Ms. Gibson?
Um, if the administration could speak more specifically about what these communication materials are and how the dollars will be used?
Okay.
Sure, so, one thought is to create a more comprehensive handbook, so to speak, of all the different various specialty programs with very clear descriptions, along with, uh, ways to learn more about them. Basically, to sell to the entire RPS community everything that is going on, but make sure that it is in a very easily accessible, friendly version, and then obviously putting that up on the website, but the cost comes in in printing. As with the score, many families really want something in their hands to be able to look through. Right now, it is very transparently hard to navigate all the different programs we've got. How do, you know, should my child be in this? Would this be a good fit? And so we wanna kinda clear that all up and make it very family-friendly. Obviously do it in Spanish as well, so that's what the $10,000 would go towards, parenthetically, the score. Um, I believe we have spent a little over $20,000 printing that this year, so this wouldn't be likely as long as the score, so that's why the $10,000, we think, would probably do it.
Ms. Gibson?
So, the, this line item, I mean, I would approve putting in $10,000 for the printing costs. Um, you know, I, I'm concerned if there's gonna be somebody else designing it, then I'd really rather have somebody internally in our communications department doing that work, rather than outsourcing a lot of design work. Um, so it looks, I, I, when I looked at it, I wasn't sure. It looked like there was already $100,000 in this line item. I just want clarity on what the amount is that we've, uh, that this line item's for right now.
Uh, yes, for the $10,000, we would, we would do the creation in-house. It would just be for the printing.
But she wants to know about what we're using--
But it looks-- But right now, so it, it, last year, we spent, we had allocated $100,000 in that, that we were waiting for from council, and it looks like we agreed to cut 50, so that would still leave $50,000 left over. Um, I, I think we should probably have it, this is a $10,000 line item? No?
Yeah, 50, and for plus 30 drop.
Oh, another 40, okay, got it.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Mr. Barlow?
Thank you. So, is this to be, for, I don't wanna be critical, but I, I do think that there are some holes in our, um, in our communication with respect to some of these programs.
There are.
So, is this going to exacerbate such holes or prevent us from improving, uh, on the communication? I, I--
My hope is that creating such a guide would help.
Sure, creating one is ten, and--
This was our best estimate based upon the score. Um, I think it will be sufficient for now.
Okay. And I would add that, um, our community meetings in the schools, um, also were a big part of our outreach for that. Um, and there were a couple of hiccups with that this year, but I think it's been made pretty clear that if you're having night at a middle school, all the specialty schools are gonna be there. So, it's, you know, so there were some things going on besides printed or online. There were some things in the building.
Right, that's certainly important and helpful. I hope we ask-- I, I'm seeing enrollment challenges at some of our schools, and in particular, some of our students who, uh, who may not have the means of others are not, are not accessing these opportunities in the same way families of means are. So I wanna make sure that we're doing what we can to address that.
Ms. Dorr?
That's just my point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, um, folks bring up a good point, and, um, one thing that, um, I know has been pointed out to me as a best practice is to actually have a human counselor, um, talk to families about what specialty opt, if they, if there are specialty options available, to actually have a resource in a school to educate, or to not educate, but meet with families about, um, you know, what might be best for their families. I suspect maybe some of that is, is solved by the counselors. Um, but I do know we can look to, it's been cited that, um, examples in the housing sector typically use counselors specifically to, to meet with people to talk about their housing options. Similarly, we could use a potential approach, um, around some of our specialty school options, so, um, those are a lot of words to say. I would be in support if the administration in the future wants to continue to think that through and come to us with what additional resources they might need.
Okay. Moving down to Maintain Manager College and Career Pathways. Amount adjusted to reflect actual salary and benefits. Having a big night on the streets of Richmond. Okay, moving on, four, you know, 12 additional AP and other advanced course teachers. Okay, Mr. Young?
Um, no, I don't have any, uh, proposal relevant to that, but, uh, I wonder if there's a way to expedite this process? I mean, I, I put, I've put mine on paper--
Line by line was what you all agreed to.
Um,
So we're going line by line.
I'm willing to-- Yeah, I, yeah, that, I think that--
Action by action?
I mean, I, I guess where I'm going with this, Madam Chair, is, uh--
I'm, it was the will of the board. It was the will of the board--
Yes, ma'am, I just--
To do it this way. Would somebody like to propose a change? I would love to entertain it.
I, I am-- I'm not proposing we change, I just-- I'm not hearing any, uh, support.
Ms. Gibson?
Since going line by line was my idea, I would like to propose that we go by block. So, all of the Action 2.3 items, all, is that what, I think we were discussing and doing it that way?
Oh, okay. Do I see, uh, do I see people in favor of--
I mean, I just wanna clarify. You could say, is there any question? Cause they're in this access.
Okay. Okay. All right, I will. I'll be go-- any action? Okay, I'm ready to, I'm ready to see nods or hands. Are we in favor of moving it to Action by Action? Yes, if yes, please raise your hand. If you would like to move to Action by Action, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, I'm gonna say I'm five, and this is-- Okay, so now, we will take a look at, let me see, Action 1.5, there are five items in there. Does anybody have something they desperately need to talk, to, talk about in that?
Everybody's got mine. If there's a second on here, I'll entertain it. After that, we can proceed.
Okay. Ms. Gibson?
Uh, Mr. Young, my suggestion would be that you call it out, cause these are a lot of documents to reference, so if there is one that you've brought up, I would suggest you, you note it, just so that, uh, just to remind us.
One, one, 1.5, ma, uh, Maintain Specialists, 1.5, um, Materials Contracted Services, 1.5 Associate Director.
He wants to eliminate those. Any support for any one of those? Yes.
Yes, yes, he did.
You did miss those, all right, all right, moving on. 1.6, looking at 1.6, and there are five items, all on the same page. Take a quick look at those and see if anybody has any suggestions to make for any of those. Continuing on. 1.7, we have three. Seeing no hands. 1.8, any suggestions? If I'm going too fast, tell me. You have, you have something in 1.8?
It looks like perhaps a smidge.
All right, smidge, all right. I will take deeper breaths. Ms. Gibson?
Um, I would just like to request on item 1.7 that we get more details in terms of, you know, the, you know, if it's a pilot, what the plan is, the timing, um, you know, where the, where the additional services will be, what they are, that type of thing.
Okay, but you're not moving to change anything. All right. Taking another deep breath. Action 1.8, this is pretty much our preschool stuff. All right, continuing on. Now we're, uh, moving to, uh, Action 2, Skilled and Supported Staff. So, in Action 2.1, the Specialist for Talent Operations Managing Implementation and Maintenance of the New HR System was removed. The other five are as were originally proposed. Ms. Cosby?
Um, I propose to delete 2.1, Contracted Services for Design and Production of Marketing Materials.
All right, so that's the first one listed under 2.1. Do you have a comment, Ms. Dorr?
Okay, do we go for, I have another one.
Well, let's-- Yeah, let's do this one first. If anyone has a, something they'd like to say about 2.1, including you.
Uh, just that there are a few things we do as important as getting great folks to come to RPS. And admittedly, we don't have a great, um, marketing presence, uh, and so this would be an effort to really enhance that, um--
Do we, do we spend it this year?
The, uh, funds were used, I, I would have to look at the spend plan. I don't wanna speak off the cuff. I know they've been used, but I--
But you don't have--
But I don't have all the details on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it has been proposed to eliminate contracted services for design and production, production of marketing materials. Can I see hands of those who agree with removing that? Okay, we have a majority, so that is stricken. And then, Ms. Cosby, you had another one?
Yes, um, 2.1, the additional of the two recruiters coordinator level.
Okay. Would you like to speak to that, Mr. Kamras?
Yes, I, I do wanna know that this budget, as it currently stands, uh, increases RPS by over 200 positions. Um, the vast majority of those, as we've discussed, over 90%, are school-based positions, teachers of all sorts, nurses, counselors, et cetera. It is not realistic, given our current capacity in the talent office, to be able to identify, vet, interview, and place that many positions with current capacity. So, um, I think this is frankly essential.
Anyone else have anything to say about-- Anyone else have anything to say about action 2.1, maintain two and add two recruiters?
It's not, I'm not against the maintaining.
Oh, just the adding of the two additional?
Right.
Okay.
I'll go with that.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's, our ability to process new hires and respond, even respond to new hires is something that's been brought to my attention since before I was on the board. And I do think that with an increase in staffing needs, that these are likely important positions, so I am curious to know if there's any additional insight from colleagues who'd be interested in cutting about why.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, here's, there is, there is, I have been advocating for more funding for schools for a good while, and, and I don't think that anybody would argue that point, but let's be frank, we're not going to get $42 million in additional funds this year.
Hello.
We're just not, and so, I, I think that this is difficult work, and I, and I wish that we were, but we have to, we're going to have to whittle down at some point. Let's begin this process now. This is, this number is double, you know, I mean, we, this is, this is a very, this is $42 million, you know? And this, and the city has said that they think revenue, what, that will, they're going to somehow lose revenue next year. I don't, I don't, so, I mean, I, I think that we, we, this is the work, and it's not obviously difficult, but, but it, so, again, from my perspective, we have to look very critically at what our real needs are in the schools. We need to make sure that we have enough bodies in the building, and, and so, and I'm not just talking about unfilled jobs, I'm talking about, you know, the positions. So, yes, you know, I, I know that we need more recruiters, I'm thankful we're going to get a new HR system. This particular item, I have concern with.
Mr. Young?
I would just point out, I think we have 24 FTEs in our talent acquisition office, 24.
Mr. Kamras?
I couldn't agree more that we need more bodies in schools. They do not fall out of the sky. We have to go get them, make the case, provide good customer service. I don't think there's anything more important than having a great teacher in every classroom. I think this is an area where we frankly have to continue to invest, because the returns at schools for kids are enormous. Every nurse, counselor, ESL teacher, Spanish teacher, we are in competition with every county, with the entire state. When the General Assembly passes a change to the counselor ratio, it's a mad dash for every counselor in Virginia. We know we have a long way to grow in this work, and so, I think if there's anywhere that it makes sense to invest on the central side to help schools, this is it.
Ms. Gibson?
So, I, I, I want to point out that, you know, we're talking about staff, it's, it's hiring staff, but it's also keeping the staff that we have. And we have a teacher retention issue, and so, I would rather keep the folks that we have invested in and put time in, that have made connections with our teachers, and we can do that by ensuring that we have enough school counselors in the building. We can do that if we ensure that, you know, that the facilities are somewhat decent. We can do that if we, you know, have ensured that our teachers have the, you know, the basic resources that they need, that they're able to identify the needs of the students in the classroom, and being able to support them in a, in a, in a real, true, authentic way. So, no, I don't disagree that we need to, that hiring is important, but when we're talking about what our classroom needs are, I really think we need to look within and seeing, you know, how can we keep the teachers that we, that we have.
All right, so, I need to see the hands of the people who want to remove the two additional recruiters from action 2.1. See four, so we will keep them. All right, anything else in action 2.1? All right, moving down to the three items in action 2.2. Is there any suggestion for these three? Ms. Gibson?
I would, I would like, I'm wondering about the 2.2, the professional development, and again, I mean, I, I want to hear from our male teachers of color to find out, you know, what, what is the, what, if we're losing teachers, you know, why, why is that happening? And is professional development the thing that's going to really move the needle here? I'm not convinced, and I guess I want to know more specifically, how many, how many teachers this is going to be supporting, what the specific plan is in terms of, you know, how these dollars will be used.
Mr. Kamras?
Yeah, so, the focus for the spring is bringing together focus groups of RPS male teachers of color to direct how those funds would be used. It's a placeholder as professional development, but they may indicate that something else would be more effective. We did want to make sure, though, that there were funds allocated to support whatever it is that they determined would be most useful. All the research on retention of teachers of color, frankly, of all teachers, but specific to programs that have targeted this, show that getting folks in the door is just step one. Creating experiences, whether it's support or other experiences, are critical to the retention of such individuals, and so, those, that's what the funds are for. We didn't want to predetermine exactly how to use them, because again, want that to come from our own teachers.
Ms. Gibson?
So, I think it's important that, that we get a more specific idea of how these funds are going to be used before, if this line item stays, we need to have more detail before we adopt our final budget.
Okay, so, is there a proposal to eliminate or reduce professional development experiences or whatever experiences the cohort desires for the male teachers of color cohort? Is there a specific proposal to eliminate or reduce that? Okay, hearing none. Take a look at all of the things in action 2.3. Ms. Gibson?
How many custodian FTEs do we have?
I don't know off the top of my head, but we can certainly get that information.
And, and when is, what is the timing on getting the salary schedules for both the custodian and the bus operator positions?
Let me check, but I think it's soon. I was having discussions with the talent office last week, so let me, let me double-check on the exact timing. I know they were running numbers on different scenarios, so let me check, and I'll follow-up with the board tomorrow on the timeline.
Thank you, and my concern is, at this point, the board does not have enough information to determine whether or not these line items are, you know, either enough or not enough.
So, are you proposing that we change them? No, okay.
I will note that our modeling is based on these numbers, so our goal has been to surpass what the counties currently offer, and trying to see if we can achieve that with these funds, so that's been sort of the target. So, I don't think there will be a huge variance, but we will try to get more detail for you so you know if there is.
All right. Mrs. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a concern with the action, the 2.3 provide one full-time sub for every school. So, you know, in order to address the issue, which was that we're not able to get our subs, the idea was that, that, you know, we have a full-time position, one with benefits, and that is, you know, adequately paid. So, my concern is, is that this, you know, 50 subs and 180 days at $100 a day, that's basically an $18,000 a year salary, which isn't a full-time salary with benefits. And so, I think that this, this, you know, would either need to be increased, I'm open to, you know, at a first step, looking at the substitute pay as our this-year step, and then looking next year at, at putting in some, some full-time positions. This substitute issue is a big issue, and I will say, as a parent, I've had, you know, I, I know of classes that have no subs, and, you know, this, this is, this is not a small matter. We need to have bodies in the building.
If I may, the, the cost of a full-time additional teacher with, you know, full salary and benefits at all of our schools is about $3.7 million. So, if that's the model we wanted to go towards, that's what the cost would be. Given your earlier comments about fiscal constraints, that seems like a cost we may not be able to bear this year. From the administration's perspective, I think a good move for this coming year would be to maintain the increase in subpay, but to not fund the full-time sub in all of our schools. I think, let's see what the impact is of the increase in subpay, which would make us higher than all of the surrounding counties, and see what effect that has on our vacancy rate, and then revisit that for FY '22 budget. So, if there were places to tighten, I would recommend taking out for now the full-time sub at, at every school.
Ms. Dorr, and then Ms. Cosby?
I would, I would support that, so I'll make an official recommendation that we prioritize increased substitute pay and model that for a year, and then revisit the full-time sub at every school to.
Strike that from this year's budget. All right. Ms. Cosby?
That's, yeah.
Okay, all right, so what I'd like to see then, I don't think we have to talk about increasing the substitute pay, we just leave it there, but I need to see the hands of people who support removing, provide one full-time sub for every school. Okey-dokey, that goes. Ms. Dorr?
Kind of along those same lines of test walking before we run, I would also, I know a little bit about incentive, cash incentive programs, and I, they can have varying degrees of success, and so I do have some concerns about allocating $100,000 to the reward for perfect attendance for bus drivers. I don't, it could work or it could not, I just, it seems like maybe a lot of money, so my proposal would be that we reduce that by 50,000.
I do, do want to know, the counties all have attendance bonus programs, so it is a key competitive disadvantage that we are in, but I get your point about walking before running, so if the board wanted to reduce that and start small and then go bigger, we'd certainly understand that. We were trying to out-compete the counties.
Okay, so now I have to go back and find this. All right, so action 2.3, bus operator attendance bonus, Ms. Dorr has proposed cutting that $100,000 to 50,000. Can I see your hands if you support Ms. Dorr's request to cut that $100,000 to 50,000? Sorry, Ms. Dorr. Moving along, anything else in that section? Action 2.3? All right, action 2.4?
Question.
Yes, Ms. Burke?
Did, did we address the JRTC when I was out?
We're not going line by line anymore, we're going section by section. So, if you, if you want to speak to something, you want to suggest something or remove something, when I call for that section, I think you were out of the room at that time, then you can.
We're still discussing 2.3, you haven't left it yet.
No, is there something you want to say?
You're still discussing this, so you haven't gone to that.
Well, I didn't, do you have something that you want to suggest about that?
I'd like to hear from our colleagues regarding the 2,000 stipend for JRTC teachers, just exactly how would, how would that work, and I know we were talking about making it comparable to what coaches get, I believe. Can you elaborate upon that?
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the unfortunate news that we kind of realized as we discussed this last time was that the, the coaches don't really see, most of the coaches don't receive stipends that, that exceed, and in many cases, they don't even rival the $2,000 stipend that we're discussing for the junior RTC teachers. Yeah, so if, if we are basing a decision, at least at this point, on, on trying to treat them like coaches, 2,000 seems fair, if we think there is, if there, basically, I think where we left this issue was the $2,000 stipend for this year, and then we've asked the administration to take a deeper dive into compensation for JRTC instructors more generally, but I, I would be open, I'd certainly be open to the idea of increasing this a little bit, especially given that $900,000 just came out, I'm sure we could come up with an extra couple bucks for the junior RTC instructors.
So, do, is there a suggestion?
Sure, let's make it 3,000.
Okay, is there any, right, may I see the hands of the people who would support that? Increasing the JRO, JROC stipend to 3,000. Okay, no, okay, everybody, all together, one, two, three, four, okay? That it will stay at 2,000.
Thank you.
Okey-dokey. So, now, unless there's someone else who wants to address anything in there, we'll move to 2.4. Take a look at those five, well, actually, it's only two, because the, the last three were moved elsewhere, so it's.
2.5.
2.4, the, the first two. Anything with those two? All right, then 2.5, there are three items in there. Ms. Cosby?
I suggest a director of equity position.
What about it? To be eliminated. Did you want to speak to that, Mr. Kamras?
This position is intended to lead the implicit bias work, which is, I believe, 2.5 in the strategic plan. If we eliminated the position, and I understand the need for fiscal responsibility, we would have to scale back those efforts for next year, and we're prepared, if that's the will of the board to do so.
All right, so, Ms. Cosby's proposal is to remove the director of equity. If you support that recommendation, please raise your hand. If you support that recommendation, please raise your hand. Four. No. Ms. Dorr? And three over here. So, that's five. So, that one's gone.
I would then recommend that we eliminate the next two line items and formally recognize that we'll just press pause on this work.
All right. Is there any discussion about that? Then please raise your hand if you support eliminating those two items as well. Okay. I'll go with it. So, that'll be five. All right. Two point six. Two items in there. RTR is, help me with my acronyms, Mr. Camaras.
Richmond Teacher Residency.
Ah, okay. So, this is maintaining our RTR, coaches and training, and tuition reimbursement for those endorsements. Any discussion or suggestions on two point six? All right. Two point seven. There's only one item. Ms. Gibson?
I would recommend eliminating the fifty thousand dollars for this item, the gala.
The celebration for teachers, principals, support staff of the year, and the Robinson Equity Award.
I mean, I would also support, you know, reducing this. I would welcome to know what the cost of, of, you know, other similar events. But I, I do have concern about the scale of this particular event.
Okay. So, Ms. Gibson has proposed removing RPS Rising Celebration for Teachers, Principal Support Staff of the Year and the Rodney Robinson Equity Award. If you agree with removing that, please raise your hand. Okay. We will keep that. Okay? Action two point eight, paid parental leave benefit. Ms. Gibson?
I have a question on this one. I, I support keeping it, but I want to make sure that if, again, going back to the substitute line item, that we have allocated for the additional days in that substitute budget, given that we'll have some fathers enjoying parental leave.
It's a good question. Let me check on that.
Okay. Anything further on that one? All right. Moving down to priority three, safe and loving school cultures. Actions three point one. There are three of them. The second one has no money in it. So, it's really only the two. Stipends for trauma-informed leads and the manager of trauma-informed practices to support the leads. Anything in that one? Okay. Ms. Gibson?
I'm, I'm, you know, per our conversation that we had earlier today, I would welcome revisiting this program. You know, and, you know, we're going to have a lot of leads and, and I, and how do these things overlap? You know, how, how can we ensure that we're taking a holistic approach? So, my request is to the administration to, to consider that. Because now there are a lot of leads, kind of across the strategic plan. We have the trauma-informed leads. We have restorative practice leads. I mean, we were talking about equity leads before. It sounds like we're not going to have those now. Then there's the get it, the get there together people. So, these are just a lot of lead things. And again, I'm just wanting to know operationally how, how they all work.
But you're not proposing to cut or eliminate that item?
I think that the district needs funding for, for trauma-informed programs and restorative practice programs and supporting our special need students. I will say, at this point, I'm not, I don't have, I'm not completely convinced that this is the best way to do that. But I do not want to get rid of the dollars.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moving to the two items. It's really only one. Stipends for restorative practice leads on the next page. Okay. Moving to action three point three. And this is our social workers and nurses and behavior specialists and counselors. Anyone? All right. The one action in, action three point four. Team building retreat for the STEM class, STEM Academy students, the rising sixth graders. Ms. Gibson?
So, my question is, and just in term, I mean, I, I would like to hear more detail about this particu-, you know, about the trip. You know, I, I don't question the benefit. I do think that this would be a good opportunity to try to get grant funding for this type of thing. I know, you know, Franklin Military has a trip or its community. And, and there's lots of benefit from that. But I, I wonder if there are other ways to fund it. My also, my, my other question is, in terms of team building, you know, I wonder about the staff at these schools. And particularly, as we're going to be moving into, you know, the, the STEM program, you know, what, would there be some benefit in, in looking at the team building perhaps with the staff? And if so, could that be incorporated in the two million dollars that we've allocated towards STEM?
Okay. So, you're proposing to add an additional action here for a team building retreat for the staff at MLK and Henderson? Or are you proposing adding staff to the team building retreat?
You know, as I do, I'm just asking a lot of questions. So, so I'm just, I, you know, this is, you know, it's fifty thousand dollars, not a huge line item. My question is, you know, as we move forward, this isn't going to be our last budget discussion. So, you know, I'm, I recognize that this is a line item that may not continue to, to make it as we move forward. So, you know, I, I recognize that. But I'm also suggesting, you know, in terms of priority, you know, how can we ensure that the team, being the staff, is really working and, and is embracing and is, you know, this is going to be a big year as they're moving into this program? And I wonder if, if, when we're talking about team building, if it might be better suited for staff than the, than perhaps students? Again, this is somewhat a hypothetical question, so I'm just kind of throwing it out there.
In the million for each academy, we will certainly do those types of activities with the staff. Yes. That will certainly be critical.
Okay. Action three five, the student celebration event. This, this is the Scholastic Standouts and the Maggie L. Walker Service Award. Any suggestions? Okay. Then, action three point six, funds for school-based student celebrations weighted by the percent of poverty. Do you have a question about the weighting?
Sure. We know that schools sometimes struggle to have the funds to do things like as simple as pizza parties or field trips or things of that nature, particularly when they don't have well-resourced PTAs. We have a couple of schools that do, but many that do not. And so, this is an effort to sort of level that playing field. So, basically, each school gets a amount per student and then that amount is weighted by the disadvantaged level of the school. So, that a school like Woodville gets extra funds to be able to do a lot of those kinds of celebrations for kids that a school in another part of town may be able to do through PTA funds. So, it's, it's a way of sort of providing more equity for some of these simple things that are very meaningful for kids and for staff, by the way. You know, whether it's a luncheon for staff or breakfast, whatever the case may be.
How much is feedback, if any, did you get from various schools pertaining to, I guess, the types of thing that they've had in the past versus what they would like to have or couldn't have and things of that nature?
I've seen a little bit of the email traffic from principals and they were over the moon to be able to have these funds, to be able to do these things. Now, remember, these were funds that were literally just released in the last week or two because they were part of the second batch from council. Mr. Hughes can share more. He's been overseeing this. But from the little traffic I saw, there was a lot of excitement.
Any proposals for a change there? All right. How about three point seven, continuation of asset-based classroom management support, which has gone down to fifteen hundred? Okay. I'm looking for the wrong one, aren't I? I'm sorry. You know, it's still gone up to a hundred thousand. Ms. Dorr?
I have a question on this one. I feel like, I'm sorry if I've asked it before, but it's hard to keep track of all the different programs that we're doing. So, if you could talk about it and then explain the rationale behind increasing it or doubling it from this year.
Yes. So, we haven't been able to do anything yet because we just got the money from council for it. The goal, there are a number of excellent providers of this kind of training. The goal would be to work with them to provide this support. As we heard earlier tonight, this is something that many new educators struggle with. I myself struggled with it my first year. And so, the idea to expand is to make it available. We had some discussion about high-priority schools versus not to any teacher who needed it, regardless of, of which school they were at. So, that's, that's the expansion.
Ms. Dorr?
Is this the same thing as positive behavioral?
PBIS is one version of this, but, but-
Okay. I'll get with, I'll get with the education.
That's passe now, so, yeah.
All right. So, any proposal for change there? Okay. And then with the food and supplies for the school justice collaborative meetings was cut per request to fifteen hundred. Any further suggestions there? Okay. Moving into priority four. There's only one for the four point one, the stipend for Go Far Together team leads. Ms. Gibson?
So, are these staff or is it parents? Who, who are the, the leads for this piece?
So, this is actually for family leads. So, one of the pivots that we made is making sure that every school either has like a functioning PTA or they could have a community team, which we're calling Go Far Together Teams. But it could be, schools have named them their own. So, for instance, Oak Grove decided to create their own community team. This would be stipend for the leads of those teams, like family leads. So, that is what that would be for.
I, I, I have some concern about parent, paying parents.
It's a practice that I've seen nationally in terms of family stipends, especially as you work to kind of like empower different families. There are several different models that actually provide stipends for families to do this work, given the commitment. So, it's not, it, it has been done in other divisions. Again, it gives us a little bit more flexibility to support families who are going to be taking time out of their day to lead some of this work. So, it's something that we added.
Thank you, Dr., Ms. Cosby?
This is going to be a question for Dr. Harris.
Oh, Dr. Harris?
Come on, sorry.
Okay. So, are we done with four point one? No suggestions? Okay. Moving to four point two? Any suggestions there? Don't go anywhere, Ms. Harris.
No.
Anything on four point two?
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Ms. Gibson?
So, I want to express that as, again, as we move forward and we're going to have to look very critically at, at all of the programs that we have that, that the home visit program is, is, is one piece where I, I personally wonder if it is a, a nice to have and perhaps not a have-to-have.
So, are you proposing a change?
You know, I, I think if there are others that are, that support it, then I would support it. But again, I, I think we're going to be revisiting this conversation again, so.
Well, if we're going to propose eliminating something, we really need to do that tonight so that Ms. Braga can get it in there for next week because next week we want to vote. So, is there a suggestion to eliminate the specialist and/or the teacher stipends for home visits?
But I want to note, the specialist is a employee right now. So, if you eliminate that, you're terminating an employee. On the stipends, we increased it based on feedback we got from the board. If the board would like to maintain it at the original amount that we had, that's fine. I do think this is sort of a win-win in that it builds critical relationships and puts money in teachers' pockets. And so, I would recommend that the board not eliminate this.
Ms. Cosby?
I just have a question. So, a couple of questions. So, for the maintained specialist, how, now, how many, how many schools are participating in the home visit program?
Right now, we have ten schools that have gone through training. And then our goal would be to expand that next year. Right now, we're getting a lot of requests from principals who want to be a part of the pilot. So, we'll probably do another training like in the spring. I think one of the things again, well, yes.
Okay. So, and our goal is to expand it. So, our goal for next year is to expand it to how many schools?
We didn't necessarily do it by the expansion of schools versus like increased teachers in the number of visits. So, for example, in our Miles Goes in Metrics, we set a goal of like a thousand visits in training over like five hundred teachers. So, that's how we've been looking at it. I think what we would want to do is look at our data for this year and then based on like what we've achieved, we would determine how many schools we want to expand it to.
So, for our teacher stipends then for home visits? Right now, we, how many teachers are participating? And what is the goal for the twenty, twenty-one school year?
Is the question more about how much of that money has already been spent or just like the number of teachers participating?
So, how many teachers are participating now? So, we have, we're in ten schools.
Yep.
So, how many teachers?
So, we've had over two hundred and fifty teachers training.
Okay.
And then I would have to get back to you on the exact number of visits they've done today.
Okay. And then for the twenty, twenty-one school year, because you said, don't do it by schools.
Yeah.
You're thinking in terms of visits and teachers.
Yes.
So, our goal is how many teachers, an increase of how many?
Yes.
For twenty, twenty-one?
Yeah. So, I think we would have to look at the data before I would feel comfortable stating what that is. Just because it's a voluntary program. So, we would have to see, one, how many did, like, let's say with two hundred and fifty, like, we hit our goal? Do we feel like that's a reasonable number for us to double it? So, I would want to look at our data in the next couple of months and then be able to set the target for this year, next year.
Okay. I will just say this. I'm in agreement with this. I'm okay, you know, whatever. But what I am cautious about with everything that we're doing. So, what's our goal? So, if we're setting three hundred and fifty thousand, that's going to cover how many teachers, how many visits, et cetera. I think we do have to have this information.
Oh, absolutely.
As we're, we don't have it now. As we're going through our budget process. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. No, I totally hear you. I just, I'm saying I want to be responsive to the data. Because it's a pilot, we also want to set a realistic goal and something that we feel is achievable.
Right.
And then also, because it's a pilot, I think it's really important to give teacher feedback. And what we're seeing now is like what's working? What do we need to pivot? Is there, is there a shift where we really want to focus on, you know, home visits and the early education grades? So, I totally hear that, but I just want to be thoughtful about the goal.
I, I get that. I'm just saying for us to make decisions going forward, we're doing it based on, all right, so the goal is an additional two hundred and fifty teachers because we know it's going to cost us three hundred and fifty.
Got you.
As opposed to really, in actuality, we might not get to two hundred and fifty teachers. We might just do a hundred additional teachers and three hundred visits. I mean, I don't know. I'm just saying, that type of data as we move forward with these, that helps us make these informed decisions.
Absolutely.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, and, um, you know, if I recall, you had said that the, um, uh, Dr. Uh, uh, Harris, um, that the goal was to do three thousand visits this year?
A thousand.
One thousand visits. Okay, so if there's one thousand visits that we do this year, and then I believe that the cost, the t- you know, each visit was about an hour.
Yeah.
And it's like about thirty dollars an hour.
Thirty dollars.
Thirty-five dollars an hour. So, so that's, that's not adding up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year?
Well, they can do multiple visits. So remember, it's a two visit cycle, so each person, so it could, and I would have to look at the data, but we can, we have some teachers, like the minimum is three visits, but teachers can exceed the visits. So for example, you can have a teacher who sets their goal of doing twenty-five visits and another one who sets six. So some of that cushion gave us room for teachers who may exceed the minimum. But we wanted to base it, we needed, um, to your point, Ms. Cosby, we, we needed some baseline, um, but we have teachers already who've like exceeded their goal.
So, um, so, so the reason why I think it's important, what, um, Ms. Cosby is saying is that the plan is key to making the decision. And I will say, um, for myself, my belief was that in the piloted schools, that every single student in the class would get a home visit.
Yeah, that's kind of the model.
But we didn't know that.
Well, I did share that. Um, I shared with the board what the home visit model was. Um, I also reminded the board when I did the presentation on the home visits, um, as well as last year when we talked about the key components of home visits, which is it's always voluntary. Um, you don't target students, but it's voluntary both for the teacher as well as the parent. So you can never say every child is going to get it because it's voluntary. But I shared that with the board several times.
So, um, I don't wanna argue the point, but I am, I can assure you that when we discussed the budget last year, um, uh, we were asking the details in terms of, the question was, how many home visits? How much is the stipend going to be? And at that point, there was no, there was no information. So, um, so look, I think, you know, the question is, what does the program look like now? How is it going to be built moving forward? Um, because as we're making the decision to invest those dollars now, we're also then committing to additional dollars down the road as we look to grow the program. And so, um, so I do think it's important that we have as much information as possible.
Absolutely.
Okay. Is anybody suggesting a change? We'd already increased this by fifty thousand, so, okay? Then moving on to the coordinator for the Welcome Center and, um, transi- transition services and other things for our EL population. That's action four point three, anything? All right, action four point four. Action four point five. Ms. Gibson?
So this is, um, this particular contract, I would recommend, um, that we look at what our existing costs are, this hundred thousand dollars. I, I guess I would support cutting this hundred thousand dollars.
Which one are we talking about?
A hundred and five thousand, four point five.
I'd ask Ms. Hudasko to share a little bit more detail about that.
This contract covers two things. One, it covers the customer service training that's part of two point one and four point, should I?
Four point five?
Four point five. Um, so those, um, customer service trainings for front office staff as well as all central office. Um, and those are multiple times throughout the year with the impact, uh, the completion goal being that everyone is attending at least two per year. So that's, um, covering some of that, what you days, as well as the administration of the family satisfaction survey that's part of goal six. And that's still something that, um, uh, because of web accessibility, phone things, we had a small vendor help us ensure that was even more accessible for people.
How much was the cost for that vendor, for the family satisfaction survey to distribute?
About twenty-ish thousand.
So that was twenty, okay. All right. And the contract for customer service training, do we have that person? No, we don't have that yet.
Yes, that's what we're doing right now. That's what I was talking about earlier.
That's true, okay. And how mu- how much was that?
So that is to cover a year and a half. That would be the rest of it, so. It's about three hundred dollars a session, a year.
Is there a s- a suggestion, Ms. Cosby?
Mm-hmm. Not yet.
Okay. So can I move on to four point six? Anyone in four point six with those two si- those two items? Okay, four point seven, books and field trip for the Richmond history course. Ms. Dorr?
Oh, I have a vendor booking.
Okay, um, four point eight, uh, out of, is this what you wanted to talk about? Okay.
Just trying to move things along. Uh, I propose that we remove the coordinator of out of school time partnerships.
Okay, did you wanna speak to that? No? All right. Is there any other discussion? All right, Ms. Dorr has proposed removing coordinator to manage out of school time partnerships. Can I see hands for all who agree with that suggestion? Okey dokey, that was gone. All right, the next one in that category was funds to support summer school partnerships with the YMCA. Is there any suggestion for that one? Ms. Gibson?
So, um, I, I just am curious about-
I'm sorry, I'm curious about the cost last year versus the cost this year, um, how much summer school has cost in the past. Uh, just a bit more detail about this program.
I will get that for the board. Um, Dr. App really focuses on this, so unfortunately, uh, given that she's not able to be here this evening, um, let me gather that for you and get it to the board.
I think it was they were doing a lot of extra things when I went and visited. They were taking kids places and doing more things with the kids. It was more of an extended day. It was kind of like an after-school experience.
Yeah, every, every Friday is a field trip, um, morning is academics, afternoon is sort of enrichment. So it's more of a camp model rather than your traditional-
Yeah.
Summer school drudgery, um, so just to be honest.
Well, the morning is still the, the basic academics.
Yes.
And then in the afternoon, they have enrichment and, and, and additional activities-
Yeah.
And field trip and stuff like that. Ms. Burke?
It is an excellent program. Mr. Young and I last year visited one of the, well, the program at Shima Rosa Elementary School. And then I would see the students on, um, Fridays outside, welcome to neighborhoods, doing fun activities together. It was beyond, um, it was learning in the community as well. So it's a great program. Great program. Then it also helps our parents to make sure our children, when it's time for school to open, they don't start out as far behind as they could from not having had those experiences. But, uh, we did too of that last year and it's an excellent program. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Gibson?
I'm ready to move to five point one.
Oh, okay, so was off. Great. Moving on to five point one, modern system, priority five, modern systems and infrastructure. Five point one, um, I think is all on this page. We've already taken out the specialist for educational technology. Any other suggestions in five point one? Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I would request that we, uh, reduce the amount for the contract for the data dashboard, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars seems like a, a whole lot of money. Um, and to be frank, um, you know, I remember Ms. Oakley had a Google spreadsheet, uh, you know, as a starting point. Um, so I, I, I guess, my initial thought is to, uh, to reduce this to a fifty thousand dollar budget, um, uh, if, if there is support for that.
Okay, Ms. Hudasko?
Um, the price point for the dashboard, as Darren had shared at the last meeting, is five dollars per student. And then there's about a twenty thousand dollar, um, setup where they link systems and things like that. So I do think that you could take it down to one twenty-ish and we'd still be able to, um, work within that price point. Otherwise, we will not have a formal dashboard, but certainly they could make a spreadsheet. But I think that's kind of a call or nothing on that.
All right, Mr. Barlow?
I'll, I'll hold a, hold a comment for now.
Okay.
If I may?
Yes.
Um, understandably and rightfully, the board asks the administration for a lot of data. Our ability to be able to provide that data is wrapped up in the extent to which we have a system such as this. The numbers Ms. Hudasko suggested are based on interviews with various providers. And so I would strongly encourage the board to maintain at least a hundred and twenty thousand as Ms. Hudasko suggested.
So what is your suggestion?
So then, let's go ahead and, uh, reduce this to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, everyone in support of this suggestion, please raise your hand. Okey dokey, a hundred and twenty. Okay, anything else for the, Ms. Page?
Question, so this contract will go out for bid, right? So it could come in lower than the one twenty and-
Those price points are generally industry standard, so everyone we've been talking to, I think, is going to come in right around that goal target. We'd just be a little flex on the set of costs.
And if I can, if I recall correctly, the, um, the dashboard that we had previously, I think there were problems with the links, trying to retrieve the data, you know, trying to create a makeshift dashboard. If everyone can recall, seemed like there were problems with the links, trying to click on the information. So you get what you pay for.
Anything else in action five point one? Mr. Young, Mr. Dund, Dr. Sapini?
Network, uh, no, sorry, Specialist Asset Management proposed we strike that.
All right, anyone wanna speak to that? Um, Specialist Asset Management ensures RPS efficiently deploys tracks and refreshes technology in schools.
I do just wanna note on this front, um, we're deploying forty-two hundred Chromebooks into our schools right now. It is, um, fiscally prudent that we keep track of them all, maintain them all, refresh them all. We're also, um, making significant investments in our wireless infrastructure. And so, um, we're also retiring, um, old iPads and other things and trying to bring more standardization into play. So I do think this is one where it's an investment for the future. We have a history of losing lots of our technology and not really knowing where it is. Um, and so I think anybody who's been in our schools knows that's true. So, um, I do think this is an investment towards building a, um, thoughtful and sustainable uh, technology infrastructure for our teachers and our kids.
Ms. Cosby?
I just wanna ask, so we add an additional, uh, FTE, but has any work been done in terms of our process? So we can add people, but if our processes are still not up to date or there's still a deficit, then you're still gonna have the same issue, although you've added additional people at the central office level. So that's, that's a concern.
Yeah, I, I just, I agree. Um, it also though takes person power to, um, manage those processes, um, track the data and so on and so forth. So, um, had we not deployed so many, um, computers and other assets, we would not have put this out, but that's the purpose.
Ms. Gibson?
Um, my question is, so in last year's budget, we eliminated, uh, many of the ITRT positions. And so I'm wondering if, um, this, these are the positions are, uh, to address perhaps? And I, and I wonder too, since we don't have those positions, as we're going back to process, you know, how, how have things been adjusted to compensate for that staff? And, and my other thought too is if we, you know, um, and this is kind of a random thought, I'm still very concerned about the folks that have lost their jobs. And, um, and so this is just an aside, but I, I really would like to know what type of outreach that we're making um, to make sure that folks are okay. And, um, and as we go through this budget, you know, if we do have new positions, I wanna make sure that we reach out to them to see if we can bring anybody back. Um, but, but my initial question is about, uh, ITRT positions.
Just to clarify, we did not eliminate any ITRP, ITRT positions last year.
Anything else? Okay, so the suggestion is to eliminate the specialist in asset management that ensures RPS efficiently deploys tracks and refreshes technology in schools. Could I see the hands of people who support eliminating that position? All right, that one stays. Are there any other? Ms. Dorr?
I would, oop, I would propose that we, I'm just worried about central office bloat, so I would propose that we remove contract officer specialist level supports contract renewals and procurement process. Feels like we can handle that internally. But if you wanna speak to-
Again, I'm, I'm very sensitive to the fact that the ask right now is quite significant. We often hear from schools, things take time to be processed, which, um, just slows down their ability to do things. And so, um, this is an effort to try to address that, um, for a division of our size. Uh, we have a very small, uh, procurement team. It's three purchasing officers. Um, and, um, Ms. Hudasko, if you wanna add anything, come on up.
I was just gonna note, we don't actually have a contract officer right now. So sort of the distinction that we wanted to draw between procurement and contracts is our contract officer could help, we're new contracts quickly that are on option years, um, and keep things current, things like that, so that the procurement team could be focused on new procurements or moving things through. So it would kind of be bifurcating, um, some of those processes there for greater, um, efficiency and making sure that our contracts were negotiated well. But, um, it would be a new position, a new type of position.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't support cutting, cutting this position at this time. Um, I hear quite frequently that the procurement process takes a while for us. Um, three procurement, uh, three, it's a three, three people, you said, for the entire division. Um, that does seem relatively, uh, small to me, uh, based on my experience dealing with procurement offices uh, with educational institutions all over the country. So I'd, I'd support, uh, keeping that in.
All right, so the proposal was to eliminate the contract officer specialist level supports contract renewals and procurement process. Could I see the hands of people who support removing that? Four, so it stays. I'm sorry?
I can support.
Okay, so now it goes. All right, turning the page. Ms. Dutchapini? I'm sorry?
Question, payroll technician, who's handling payroll right now? Or who's doing his job right?
I can't speak to the specifics of that. I mean, obviously. I'm glad to get more details on that for you. I just, I don't want to speak without good information.
Is that in HR?
Do you want to speak? I'm sorry if I neglected to note, Mr. Simmons had a death in the family. So he was at the funeral today. It was out of state. That is why he's not able to be here tonight.
For the payroll technician, this is simply adding an additional position to the team to better distribute workload. So it would not be new work, it would be producing the more extreme of the work.
How many do you count?
Three payroll technicians, let me be precise, three payroll technicians and then accounts payable technicians, which I don't know is.
Does payroll for us go through these three payroll technicians?
Timekeepers are at transportation, the payroll.
Mr. Young?
I concluded in my voluminous cuts, yes, I propose to strike it.
Okay, so the proposal is to eliminate the payroll technician? Can I see the hands of people who support removing the payroll technician? Okay, it stays. Anything else in 5.1? I don't want to move on without being sure or ready. Okay, 2 and 5.2. Any suggestions here? All right, moving then to 5.3, two actions here. Any suggestions? No? I don't want to go too fast, so give me a dirty look if I'm going too fast. In action 5.4. We eliminated one specialist and traveled to best practice sites. So we have five actions here. Ms. Gibson?
So I want to look at the equity fund. And again, my wish is that rather than have this bucket where there, you know, that's somewhat open, I would prefer to identify the specific needs and to add those to each line item, rather than this, right now, it feels a bit like a slush fund.
So again, the idea here is for schools to decide on top of all the other allocations, if there's anything else that they feel is of particular need. I think we saw some great uses this year. Carver, I know they got a bunch of technology, other places as well, that we allocated those funds to meet some acute one-time needs. Really, it's putting the principal and the leadership team of these high priority schools in the driver's seat on some of these unique, critical needs. Yeah.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you. So I mean, I don't, I appreciate the interest in allowing principals to have some discretion. But my question is, why don't we just ask them now what they want? And let's put some more specifics, because I feel like, again, once we make this ask, then we're going to have to advocate for it. And I would much rather say, look, I wanted $100,000 to have another AP in a school, or I wanted $100,000 to be able to, you know, fix, you know, some issue with the building, than to say, you know, I need $500,000 and we'll see what we end up doing with it.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think at least identifying the schools would be helpful. I don't know, I don't know to what degree we're in a position to have commitments for funding out of this potential fund from all of our, all the principals who'd be impacted by next week. But I do think knowing the schools would go a long way in having an idea of what the allocations to those schools would look like.
Okay, so Ms. Gibson, what is your suggestion that we do with this?
So if there is support among my colleagues, my request is, I appreciate the suggestion of Mr. Barlow, that the administration come back with a recommendation on how these funds would be broken down on a school-by-school level.
Want to speak to that before I look for hands?
Yeah, I'm just not sure we're going to be able to get that level of detail to the board's satisfaction. I certainly though can put forth a proposal as to, per Mr. Barlow's request, which schools and even which amounts for those schools, based on size and need and whatnot. That we could certainly provide.
I thought we hadn't decided on the schools yet.
Just a recommendation for the board, not a decision.
Okay, so at the moment, there's not a suggestion. Dr. Sapini? Sure.
When it comes to any of the data or questions or, you know, anything we had to come back to, when will we get those?
I'm going to work on it, excuse me, as fast as possible, because I know you have to vote on Monday and Lynn has to create a new budget book. So we will do everything with as much speed as we possibly can.
But at the moment, there is no suggestion to cut that or change that? Okay, so, Ms. Gibson?
Thinking about the comment from the representative from LULAC, I wonder, my question is, in the budget, you know, if there are a group of students that do not have faculty support and, you know, where is that addressed in the budget? And is that something, because I would be thrilled to see that this equity fund is used to address our English language learners in some way, because, you know, because the need is certainly there.
Okay, so. I am not clear on what you want me to do here. You want me to ask the board to repurpose that money? For English language learners?
I would like for the administration to indicate the problem that was mentioned during public comment in terms of, you know, the students that are sitting in a room essentially with a sitter. And I'm using the words that were used by the speaker. So what I would like to hear from administration is, you know, what is the reality of that situation? And if there is accuracy to it, how are we planning to address it, because it's not okay? And if there isn't already a plan to address it, that perhaps we specifically look at this 500, you know, this line item to repurpose those funds in that way.
I'd direct the board's attention back to 1.6. So 1.6, you'll see the local match for the addition of 10 ESL teachers. So I think part of what had been shared was this perception that class sizes were so large and that work wasn't happening, so adding more teachers to address that. Additionally, the materials and services for the L trainings, putting some of that back in as we think about what are some of the supports that our teachers need to better serve this population. I would suggest those two things as starters for how that's being addressed.
Okay, Ms. Page?
Question, so in our priority schools that have been identified, a lot of those priority schools have a large ELL population, so that equity funding would be able used for some of those initiatives, support?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So just, it was just clarifying a question.
Okay, so where am I? Because now I went over there and now I have to come back here. So we are. All right, so we were talking about this 5.4 equity fund to assist high priority schools with acute needs. And there's a lot of, I think, feeling that this is a little too vague. And so there was a suggestion that we might be able to be more specific, that maybe some of the needs our English language learners have could be addressed with some of this. But I'm still awaiting an actual suggestion. Ms. Burke?
I can go down a list right now, in terms of what every teacher and every principal would want to have in his or her school, which are things that, a parent spoke this evening about whiteboards. If that's what one school may need, whiteboards, another school may not need whiteboards. One school, the PTA I know of, was able to purchase whiteboards. Someone else may want document cameras. Someone else may want classroom novels. Someone else may need, it depends upon, I like the idea of the school teams having the opportunity to know what's needed and to be able to have the money right there to get it, because a lot of essentials that many of our schools don't have. I don't have a problem with what's listed. And as Mr. Young always talks about, the principals being the CEOs or whatever of their buildings, surely they should be able to decide. I mean, we talk about donors choose. We talked about that earlier. So if people, if teachers have the opportunity right then and there to have this line item listed, to get whatever supplies or whatever they so desired, why not have the funding there for them? Because it's not equitable. I can give you a whole list, and it's not just in my district. Do you want the list?
No, thank you. So there has not been a suggestion for us to indicate agreement or disagreement with? Did you have one, Gibson?
So the original suggestion was that we break it down by school. And I still support breaking it down by school, as Mr. Barlow suggested and as Mr. Camrus identified. So that was what my original suggestion was. My, but I also want to, to, you know, emphasize that it's not the question as to whether, you know, any of these line items don't have merit. I'm just the crazy liberal who is like, let's make sure we are realistic, you know? And I want to make sure that, I want to be able to advocate for those things. And so I think that we have a stronger case at advocating for these line items, the more detail we provide.
Okay, but awaiting the list of schools, it stays in. Everybody there? Okay. Anything else in action 5.4? Okay, moving to 5.0, yeah, moving to 5.5. This is our transportation, Dr. Sapini, and then Ms. Dorr?
I'd like to remove the bus operator recruiter.
Okay. Okay, so we have two suggestions that we remove, the bus operator recruiter. If you agree with removing that, please raise your hand. All right, that one. Okey dokey. Anything else, Ms. Page?
So I have a question. So. That position, because we know that is a challenge for us for. So, okay, bus operator, we're talking about bus drivers and bus monitors and, okay. So we know that's a challenge for us, as well as other localities, the state. I mean, this is a national issue. Richmond is just not facing that issue.
Anyone like to change?
I'll just add, I'm grateful that the board has kept in the two additional recruiters and they can take on this work.
All right, anything else in there with our buses? Any other suggestions? All right, moving to 5.6, this is our nutrition area. Any suggestions, concerns in 5.6? Okay, 5.7, specialist oversee launch. Oh, I'm sorry, never mind, there's nothing there. 5.8, we do have some money in there. Ms. Dorr?
I propose we remove the coordinator of sustainability. As much as I hate to see it go, I think we can't be in a position to maintain unfunded grant positions.
All right, is there anybody want to weigh in on that? Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can we get a little more detail on what exactly that position does? I assume there's a body occupying that position at this point?
Well, there was. She has since taken a position with the city, so it is now vacant. But that role handles everything from all of the various details with our solar project, recycling program that we were hoping to start, continuing our work to go more electric in terms of our transportation, stormwater projects to reduce those fees and so on. But if we think about what is essential for student success, I can see this is not essential.
All right, so the suggestion has been made to eliminate the coordinator of sustainability position. If you are in agreement with that suggestion, please raise your hand. If you are in agreement with that suggestion, please raise your hand. Okay, that one's gone. Okay, anything else in five point eight? Ms. Gibson?
Um, so my question is regarding the facilities assessment coordinator. Um, this one, it sounds like we have this RFP, I thought, about this facilities assessment and now it's a job and, um, so...
Sure, if I may. Um, the guidance I, I thought I heard from the board was that the costs that we had researched somewhere in the two to three hundred thousand dollar range were, uh, too high and the suggestion was made to just hire an individual who could do the work for us. So that was the derivation for this. If the board would like to go back to the RFP process, I'm happy to eliminate this position, but then I think we would need to budget for the RFP process.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, um, you know, I can, my, my thinking is that the, the scope of the original RFP was not, um, necessary to have the scope as it was defined. At this point, I think that the board needs to have, uh, clear numbers in terms of the cost of building and renovating the buildings, um, per the adopted strategic plan. And, um, and so developing that cost does not cost two hundred thousand dollars or three hundred thousand dollars. Um, and I'm not sure it requires an ongoing coordinator position from my perspective. So, I, I guess my, my recommendation would to, to continue our discussion about that, that work, but, um, to eliminate this position, uh, from the budget.
Alright, if you are in agreement with the suggestion to remove coordinator facilities assessment from action five point eight from the budget, please raise your hand. Okay, only seeing three, it stays. Anything else in actions five point eight? Alright, now we move down to this big section. Um, so first we have the additional ones related to priority one. Let's just take as our first chunk, what's on this page? Starting with K three teachers and instructional assistants and ending with associate for principal directors. Is there anything on this page under additional basic needs and adjustments that anyone would like to address at this time? Ms. Cosby?
Um, I propose to eliminate associate for principal directors.
Okay, associate for principal directors.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Hughes to come up and, and speak to the importance of this.
Thank you for the opportunity to address this. I would like to approach it from two different ways. First off, the principal directors are the only directors in our entire organization that does not have office support, number one. Number two, our principal directors besides being tasked to be in schools eighty percent of the time as well as handle division level responsibilities, including setting up cluster meetings, meeting frequently with parents before and after school and during school hours and the number of hours they work. It is incumbent, I believe, upon us to provide them, uh, appropriate office support. Principal directors are burning themselves out. And I'm also worried about the signal we are sending to, I would argue, for the most important people in our entire school division. If I believe that principals are the most important people in our school division, then certainly the people who directly support our principals are extremely important. And again, they are without support that every other director in our division has. Thank you.
Alright, so the suggestion was made that we eliminate the associate for principal directors. So this is basically the clerical assistant to support them. Um, if you are in favor of eliminating this position, please raise your hand. I see four. So that, five, I'm sorry? So that one's gone. Alright, anything else on this page related to priority one under additional basic needs and adjustments? I hear people turning the page. Ms. Dorr?
I, um, wanted to see, um, get the administration's perspective on combining the special assistant managing the requirements of the VDOE MOU and the data specialist, if those two positions could potentially be combined into one. Uh, so it's, uh, special assistant academic office managing requirements of the VDOE and associate of library, or sorry, data specialist academic office.
They're two pretty distinct roles. The data specialist, so assuming we get a data dashboard, we need someone to make sure everything gets into it, um, bad data in, bad data out. Um, the special assistant is really because of all of our work with the state, I'd say, I think I told you twenty, twenty-five percent is about licensure and other hiring things. I'd say the next fifty percent is about all sorts of academic related matters. And, it is just a voluminous body of work to stay on top of everything that is required from the state. Um, our last meeting last week involved a binder bigger than this of, oops, sorry, of documents that had to be produced and, right now, it's sort of, everybody's borrowing time that they don't have to, to manage that. So that's what the special assistant.
Mr. Young?
That was one of the many included for elimination, so propose we strike it.
Alright, so you're proposing to strike both of those?
Take one of my own ones.
Alright, so, we'll start, we'll start with the, um, special assistant academic office to manage the requirements of the VDOE MOU. If you are in favor of eliminating this position, please raise your hand. Okay, I double checked, four, so we keep that one. And then we have the data specialist to assure, now this one, I'm not sure what split funded means, but anyway, data specialist academic office?
Yes, it's, I believe, partly funded through a title grant, so that's why the cost is much lower.
So the data specialist academic office has been proposed to eliminate that position. If you're in support of that proposal, please raise your hand. Okay, that one stays. Anything else?
You wanted, you wanted to eliminate the associate for library and media services, didn't you?
Bite your tongue? Okay, now we're turning the page. Alright, so at the top of the page, we have all these, um, chief academic officer requests. So looking at us over. Ms. Gibson?
I would just, um, I would request that the administration provide, um, more details specifically on the programs and student supports, the exceptional education items and academic operations.
Okay. Two of those are adjustments up to reflect actual expenditures and the Odwin academic programs and student supports for dropout recovery and language acquisition software. So there's no suggestion. Okay, moving down to, uh, priority two. Four items in there. Okay, moving down to those related to priority three. Alright, we have nothing for priority four. So then we have these related to priority five. Ms. Gibson?
Um, so my, uh, the bathroom blitz is, is an item that I've asked for status updates. And so, you know, I, I, I think we owe the community, uh, an overview of where we stand with the bathroom blitz, which bathrooms have been addressed, which bathrooms are outstanding, um, and, uh, and, and, you know, particularly with this line item, will that finish the work? Um, how much is, how much is that going to get us? Uh, you know, this was something that was originally pitched as we can, you know, address all of our bathrooms if we just pick in. Um, and so I, I think that we need to, to get some, some more clarification.
I can see the bathrooms are larger effort than we thought. And I do wanna note that this isn't just the bathroom blitz. This is, um, all of our non-capital funded, basically maintenance cash. So, a light bulb, uh, window breaks, that sort of thing. So, we call it out the bathroom blitz just cause it's a piece of that, but, um, it's for all those sort of routine things that come up in a school.
And we raised this by two hundred and fifty thousand. So, I mean, what, a week ago?
We had a breakout of, I mean, breakdown of, so the bathroom blitz, but blitz is wide and, you know, we anticipate, because I remember Ms. Burke talking about curtains and light fixtures and things like that, but just what we think it'll be.
I could give an estimate for the bathroom blitz and the rest, but I'm not in a position to give an estimate for how much for curtains or like that.
No, 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 I, because it was increased because, so if things come up, this principal director, you know, like, Ms. Burke was like, okay, these things that come up that will help out. So I get that you don't have all of that, just, and the bathroom blitz especially, just how much we, where we are.
Okay. Dr. Sapini?
What is partial computer refresh for central office with it?
Um, most of central office is working on full computers. I know Michelle's computer takes about thirty-five minutes to start up when it does start up. So, our ability to support schools is connected to our ability to, uh, our technology too, yeah.
And it's for a three meter retraction that you can use.
Okay, are you telling me it's the same one? Okay, Ms. Ms. Gibson?
Yeah, so my question on, at this one, I guess I would just like to, to, to know, you know, how many computers, how many of them are, are we gonna address? Is this something that we are suggesting is, you know, a recurring item? Um, just again, just more detail.
You want to?
Yes.
No?
So we have roughly two hundred ish central office employees. Um, not everyone has a laptop, that's also part of our asset. But, we would need to refresh, uh, every three years or a new device. So that's why it was about seventy-five ish or so.
Anything else? Ms. Cosby?
Um, I'm, I would like for us to consider eliminating the executive director operations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, this one I, uh, do wanna recommend very strongly to keep. Uh, the portfolio of work of the operations team is, um, I think it's fair to say, um, the largest if not the, the second largest mix of academics, um, given all the various moving parts, particularly in transportation facilities, tech and nutrition. Um, this would help Mr. Simmons enormously, um, be able to manage all of the work. So, um, do feel strongly about this. Uh, if there is consensus to the contrary, I would gladly offer up another position to save this.
Well, I'm sorry, that's good.
Thank you. Okay.
I, I do want us to, to think about this now. I'm asking the board, I'm sorry. And I get what you're saying, but we did, when we were looking at cabinet level positions and salary. We combined, one, part of the argument was to combine operations and finance for, at the time, we touted a savings. So, now we're adding money back into this area at very top level. We're not talking about, this is a, this is a hundred and seventy-five thousand, which is close to the one eighty. So, I'm just...
Clarify, this is with benefits.
I'm sorry?
This is with benefits.
This is with benefits.
So the salary would be...
Oh, wait, okay, wait, wait. I'm glad you said that. So, when we were talking about without benefits, the other positions, I think we have to be very clear. We had one eighty salaries that we did not add benefits to when we were thinking about that, right? I just, this is for the board, we have to be, I'm glad we're doing it now. But we were talking about a savings before and, this was one of the savings. But, if we find that we can't do it, what other position are you talking about?
Uh, well...
Ms. Gibson, if you want, ready? While you're thinking about it, let's, Ms. Gibson, and then Mr. Barlow.
Um, I wanna, I mean, Ms. Cosby said it very well, this is, this is, this is a big deal. This is a really big deal. Um, we, we told, you know, the, the, when the decision was made to condense the cabinet and to offer the salaries that they were, the, um, the explanation was that there would be a savings and that we could, that, you know, two people could do one job, or one person could do two jobs. And, you know, I, I'm, I, I, I always recognized that that wasn't, that wasn't possible, that, that one person could do two jobs. And, and now here we are. You know, we can't go back in time, we can't undo what happened. I do still believe that the decision to combine those jobs and to, um, to, to offer the salaries that we did without a competitive process was a mistake. That said, you know, I'm not going to, uh, punish the district moving forward because of that. And so, I, I, I just wanna recognize this moment in time. And, um, and I, I look forward to, you know, hearing what other solutions that we can have. Um, but that, that, that was a significant decision that we made very early on.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, I was gonna offer up that we should allow Mr. Simmons to plead his case at the next meeting assuming he's still here, but, uh, I do think that these are notable concerns.
I would offer up the, um, given the concern about the facilities assessment, if we narrow that scope, um, I would offer up eliminating that positions. Uh, that is in five point three.
Alright, so we really... Alright, so we really, I guess, have two opportunities to agree to a suggestion. The first opportunity to agree with the suggestion is the opportunity to eliminate, um, now, we'll do the first one first, the, um, now I can't find it again. No, no, the one that they wanna. Okay, executive director operations. So, the proposal was to eliminate that. Now, I don't know whether we wanna vote on it, on, on that vote. Offer a consideration, um, one, and then the other? I mean, I don't know that every, I don't know that every, that the majority of the board wants to eliminate the executive director of operations.
Look, I'm willing to, I was just gonna say, you said, and I, and I, and I agree with, with Ms. Gibson, if we're finding a need for it now, we understand there's a need, no, don't penalize the district, absolutely. So, Mr. Cameron's has offered up another solution, I'm, I'm willing to go with that, if my colleagues are willing to go with that.
Okay, so then we've gone. So then the proposal is to eliminate the facilities.
Assessment.
Assessment.
Coordinator.
Coordinator. Okay, so then, who is in favor of that suggestion and then keeping?
The other.
The other one.
What's the number?
The assessor.
Five point eight for the assessor, and then, in priority five, state function, two thousand, executive director operations.
Alright. So, if you are in support of that compromise suggestion, please raise your hand. Okay, that's five, so that's done. And you have to go back and carve that one off, and let me go back to the last page and consider if there's anything else on our last page related to priority five. Ms. Gibson?
I would like to discuss the, um, upgrade of the coordinator in chief of staff's office.
Alright, and what would you like to?
So, um, is this an existing position, and so is, and, um, what is the current budget and?
Um, so yes, uh, the chief of staff had an executive associate position, like all of the chiefs, formerly filled by the wonderful Bridget Davis. Um, it's just me, priority one, I don't need office support to do those types of things myself. Um, one of the things that, uh, Bridget did add tremendous value, and so I wanted to evolve the position to be as more of a project management type, uh, person supporting on actions related to strategic plan, things like that. So, I wanted to pivot to a position to be, um, specifically focused on such and not have a, um, a clerical.
Now, didn't, didn't we upgrade, uh, uh?
Ms. Cosby?
One, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize. Um, or a little, one second, one second. Now, the last budget cycle, we increased the budget. There were several positions, including the exec, including the executive assistant position, is it executive associate?
Um, there was one executive associate who received a, uh, stipend, but not this one.
I want you to do, I'm looking at it, okay. But you wanna get it out of the realm of executive associate and of that.
Yes, just given the transition, like, of the communications team out of this office, I don't believe it's necessary for, uh, that I was.
Okay. Did you wanna make a suggestion about that, Ms. Cosby?
No, I just, I thought we added to it, the position as.
Alright, anything else? Ms. Cosby?
Alright, so this, the procurement officer, alright, let me make sure, 'cause my memory fails me. Clearly my short term. Because she just talked about it, we shall just, okay, how many procurement officers do we have, three?
Yes.
Well, it was.
Am I getting that confusing payroll technician?
Oh, no, that was payroll.
That's payroll, payroll technician, three.
Yeah. Three procurement officers.
Three procurement officers, and this would be four.
Did we go through with the contract? No, 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 no.
The contract officer would be for the renewals and things that, right now, are stymieing the procurement officers. Sorry.
And that was taken out. Okay. Do we have an additional one? You know, I feel like we oughta all stand up and do head, shoulders, knees, and toes. So, let's take a two-minute break, 'cause everybody can stretch before we move on with the agenda. But I would, if you were, if you were, if you were little people, I'd have you doing heads, shoulders, knees and toes, knees and toes. Heads, shoulders, knees and toes.
I did not! Knees and toes!
Good job, good job.
I did a lot of head, shoulders, knees and toes in my day. I can still do it. Where's the live streamy thing going on? Oh, really?
Well.
Do we have anything?
Good, we got the nursery and.
Oh, yeah. Everything does.
What else we gotta do?
Health, I'm moving.
What else is on the agenda?
Alright, you're moving to our rant, so.
Two, uh, don't worry, in the district.
Alright, I'm setting my timer for two minutes.
Wonderful, my goodness, that's a lot, that's stressful.
No, they not. And all this, present, receive.
We wanna have another kid in our houses.
The alternative paths, personnel actions, are there any travel?
Like, in between.
You're lying.
I think we have to do some of this. Jason, cameras. Alright, how long of an update on the MOU? Who was? Yes. And the grandfather? Alright, we gotta set. Legislative update is, is in.
It's on board docs. I kinda did a legislative update.
Alright, so, suppose we just said the legislative update's on board docs, we don't need to talk about.
I think. The Stampa Robinsons, they were suggesting her name, for, there's, Familia Street, her name was suggested.
Oh! No! Was it in the newspaper?
I would give anything to share.
See, I read the obituaries, every day, make sure I'm still here.
Someone to answer emails. Well, who would do the middle school, Dr. Effitz might hear, who would do the middle?
We already, we already postponed now, oh. So, if we just say the legislative update is on board docs, you need to see it. We can skip the finalist names, Familia Street. No, not Familia Street.
There's, there's no urgency on Familia Street, the urgency was with the other three schools.
Yeah, we need to do those, so, we need to vote on that tonight, and I think we need to do the alternative updates.
There's no clothes.
Alright, so, I didn't ever get my timer set, y'all interrupted me. Alright, come on back here, people. We're trying to get this over with, come on, Mr. Young, I see you, come on back. There has been a suggestion that we move in a quick way. And so, we're going to try this, we really need to do six point oh one, six point oh two, six point oh three. There is no six point oh four. Seven point oh one is on board docs, if you need to see the legislative update, you can just read it there. Same thing with the MOU, is a, are we gonna need to have it or not?
The MOU, we had a great.
Alright, wait a minute, wait, no, no, alright, we're gonna.
You gotta buy her.
And we're gonna, and we're gonna skip eight point oh four. And you have all the rest of this, so let's, let's move on expeditiously. Alright, so, we need to receive for action the recommended names for George Mason Elementary School, ESH Green Elementary School, and the new middle school on Hall Street. So, is there a motion to rename George Mason, Henry L. Marsh the Third, ESH Green Cardinal Elementary School, and the new. Let's do it all together, and the new, if there's a problem, we'll separate them. And the new middle school on Hall Street as River City Middle School.
So move.
Second.
All, we have to roll call vote, okay, here we go. Mr. Young.
Thank you for indulging me, Madam Chair. I'll be brief, because I think I spoke at length. Last meeting, maybe, on this subject. Uh, I'm, I do wanna share, I'm most pleased that we are right, we will rightfully recognize, uh, Henry Marsh, uh, for all of his, uh, many contributions to the, uh, to the city and his place in history. I am most displeased, however, uh, that, uh, this board, um, seemingly didn't have enough wisdom to, uh, to do that by way of su- uh, addition rather than subtraction, and, and, uh, and that we will be, uh, repealing, uh, George Mason's, uh, rightful place in history, uh, to, uh, to accommodate, thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
No.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, now, we got um, the updates to six point oh two, third read, and action policy five, dash four point four, that. You ready? Okay. I didn't know it since.
Good evening, um, so based on the feedback shared by the board last time, you'll see two modifications to the alternative path to tanning standard use of credit policies those are in.
Yes, we need a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Alright, is there any discussion? You have discussion? No?
Uh, sure, um, I wanna thank the administration for taking into, um, consideration, uh, some of the policy concerns that we brought up last week, or, at, at our last meeting. I do think, um, I, I hope that the administration, uh, continues to work in the spirit of these changes, in the sense that, uh, we are not, um, replacing teachers with, uh, these types of, uh, courses, uh, that they are, uh, as rigorous or, or more rigorous than, uh, hopefully not more rigorous, but as rigorous as, uh, our students are receiving in classroom, um, instruction, and, uh, and that the, um, the courses are not overused by students or others in an effort to, uh, avoid valuable class time. Um, so thank you for the administration for working on this, and, uh, I look forward to voting for it.
Okay, any other discussion? Ms. Page, second. Alright, thank you, Ms. Desko. Roll call. Ms. Gibson?
Abstain.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. uh, Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, so, the personnel items.
Great, um, tonight, I bring to you for consideration the nomination of twenty employees, the change of contract of twenty-three employees, the resignation of thirteen employees, the furlough of ten employees, the return from leave of fifteen employees, the retirement of six employees, the termination of two employees, and the name change of one employee.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, let's vote. Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okey dokey, there are no school board travel and district activity requests, the legislative update is on board docs, and we have a cute little update on the MOU.
Now? We had a great meeting last week, we gave a big binder of a lot of stuff, they were quite happy, which was great. And, um, I do feel like we're beginning to, you know, turn the tide, make progress, um, and so, um, yeah, it was a good meeting, it's good, it was a good five hours.
Okay, and we postponed the middle school program studies, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Mad, Madam Chair. So, um, if there are any materials that have been shared with the state as part of the MOU, um, I would encourage the administration to include those on these updates, and if there's anything that can be shared, um, that would be appreciated.
You got it. Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm curious to know whether there's anything that makes them particularly happy, uh, that we should be aware of, or if you may be able to send supplementary notes in their future.
Um, I have a reply on that, in the fall. I think, generally speaking, they just, um, feel like, you know, progress is beginning to be made, things are beginning to all of that, so, um, I think also, uh, there's new leadership there, and so I think we're getting to a new rhythm, which is a little bit different. The, the revenue, we're getting, we'll have it.
Anyone else? Okey dokey, uh, we need to receive a resounding grandfathering updates. We'll do it next time, and the same with the finalist names for. We'll do it next time, and the same with the finalist names for Amelia Street. And you have the information on JCT, school facility use, all of that's on board docs. Any announcements? Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, I presented my colleague with the opportunity of a lifetime, uh, last week, uh, to sit in my stead at the Maggie Walker. The Maggie Walker, um, board meeting this Thursday, I understand we're all busy, uh, and we've had a hard time with, uh, filling some of these type of things during the workday, but unfortunately I'll be all out of town. So I, in, in the event that no one can, I'm, I'm, I'll send some notes to the chair of the Maggie Walker board, uh, as well as the members. But, uh, thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Ms. Door?
Um, we had decided as a board to suspend the finance committee meetings, um, until after the budget, but, um, I was trying to ask Paige, and she brought up a good point, that we have a new auditor, and we haven't really given her a lot of our time. So, um, I would propose that we reinstate the next meeting in March, um, and make it not necessarily the council budget, but talking about the auditor. And I think, and we'll bring that over back to the board.
Join one? New business? Ladies, gentlemen, anything?